Okay, it's 9:36 and I'll call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and please ask our clerk to call the role to establish a quorum and read the meeting procedures.
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 27th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comments will be routed to the board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you Flo. Supervisor Frost, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands when we stand under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you and good morning and welcome everybody and I apologize for my absence at the last meeting but want to thank my colleague Vice Chair Kennedy for running a very efficient meeting last week. And with that, I'll turn it over to our county clerk for our off-agenda public comment. And for those of you who are just joining us for the first time, what we do is we take off-agenda comments, that is comments on items that are not specifically agendized for discussion. We take those at the beginning of the meeting for 30 minutes. If we cannot get through all the off-agenda comments within the first 30 minutes, we will hold them and do the remainder of the off-agenda public comments after the timed calendar. So with that, Madam Clerk.
Okay, first we have Elisa or Eliza Dare.
My name is Elisa Daranajo, wife of Jaime Narajo, who was killed in 23 seconds during a mental health crisis in front of me. I was viciously thrown to the ground. I watched as sheriff shot my husband five times. Watched as my husband was handcuffed while he bled out. Was threatened with, was treated like a criminal. Was denied access to my home for over six hours. Was threatened with the rest if I did not allow them to search my house, which I never agreed, but still had my house searched. Things were taken from my house that was not logged. Was told by phone operator by mistake what was taken, then you guys claimed she didn't know what she was talking about. Bill for medical and ambulance servants after they killed my husband. My family was torn it while we sat in the street like dogs. No, I think we were treated worse than dogs. Still have no accountability. You guys say you guys are investigating this? What is there to investigate? It's a closed and open case. My husband was murdered during a cry for help. Mr. Serna, you said you would help us when all this happened, but now all you do, all you guys have done is swept it under the rug. Nothing has been done. If it is being investigated, why have I not been talked to? That part of the, that's part of an investigation? Or is it happening so much in the black and brown communities that there is no time? I am a taxpayer and guess what? I'm an American citizen, born to American citizens. I was raised and I lived in California all my life. I would like the police report. That is my right. I need to send it to the life insurance company. I need accountability. I need closure for me and my family. We all need the law to change on how a mental crisis is dealt with. I pray for all the family that are where I am and I pray for you all. I pray that you guys will never have to go through this. One day this could happen to you. Mental crisis in health is not a crime. It's a sickness and any of us can face it, including all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Of course, this is off-agenda so we can't talk in too much detail about what was just referenced by the speaker. However, I just want to state for the record that the Board of Supervisors does not, is not an investigatory body on something like this. Of course, we can direct the resources that we have available to try and assist in a difficult situation like this and I have done that, working with Mr. Jones. And Eric, if you could, I'd ask that you maybe circle back with the speaker to make sure that she understands what has been completed to date, what the Inspector General had done before her departure to date and other parties. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
Okay, next we have Erica.
I'm sorry, she's parked in her car.
Okay. Volma.
Good morning and thank you all for having me. My name is Volma Volsey. I am here on behalf of the Sacramento Central Labor Council AFL-CIO, who represent over 180,000 members in the Sacramento region with over, and over 100 different unions. I'm here in solidarity with my brothers and sisters from SEIU 2015, who does the amazing work of taking care of people on a day to day. Over the past 10 months, they have not had the opportunity to sit down with anyone to bargain on their contract. Right now, I think the average they're making hourly is around $16.50 an hour. That is less than $3,000 a month and, 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 and in a place where the average rent is around $1,800 a month. Now, I know you all love our people. You all love our community and I know you are all great, amazing leaders. So what I'm asking for is to please get back on the bargaining table with our IHSS workers here and bargain in good faith. They have been pleading, they have stayed out, they've camped outside. It's time we do something about this and it's time we take care of our people because they are doing the great job of taking care of our community. So I urge you all to get back on the bargaining table and make sure we get a contract for SEIU 2015. Thank you.
Thank you Volma.
Let's move to Sherilyn. I'm going to give Erica time.
Erica, when she comes back, we'll, we'll put her.
Good morning Sue, Patrick, Richard, Phil and Phil. How are you guys doing this morning? I'm coming here this morning to talk about what you're allowing to happen. Now, once you get like Biden and jump on board, like they went to help Israel, y'all are my ally. Come help me. Do you understand? Help me to where I don't have to take $177 off my dinner table because my rent went up. I live here in America and I have you people dictating how I live, but the, living here in California dictate how we all live. So can we, as providers, catch up to you? Can we catch up to just eating like you? Because y'all got 36% raise. Can I come to dinner? Because that's where I'm going to be coming is to each and every one of your house. I didn't come to California to be homeless and I'm not going to let y'all, allow y'all to do that to us. When we serve the community, we serve it. You may sit up here and think that we babysit. Have any of you babysat before? I don't remember babysitters giving shots. I don't remember babysitters giving medicine. I don't remember babysitters changing colostomy bags, hugging, loving, and kissing and letting them know I'm here for you. Can y'all be here for us? That's all we ask. We're not trying to be hostile, but when you getting ready to be put out your house, don't you shake? When you have control, to help me stay by just giving me a raise like you got. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Allies. You're my allies.
Sabrina.
I think she's, Sabrina walked.
Let's move on to Darrow.
I thought that was her walking down.
Sabrina.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Darrow.
My name's Darrow Sprague. I've been an IHSS provider since 2018. I'm currently looking for a client that has enough hours to make sure I can keep my roof over my head. Here's the thing, finding a client's not hard. There's plenty of people across the county that need care and a lot of, a lot of hours are being unclaimed. Different clients need different hours. Some people need five hours a week, some people need 65 hours a week. The challenge isn't finding a client that has enough authorized hours for a provider like me to make ends meet. Let's not forget that IHSS is more than a county program. For providers, it's a career and a livelihood. We've been coming here for months telling you how many of us are often at the risk of homelessness, that you still won't pay us a living wage. We've been telling you about how much time, love, and compassion we put into caring for our clients, yet you still won't pay us a livable wage. We endure all this while navigating an IHSS system that is so undervalued by the county, it often fails providers and consumers alike, yet you still won't pay us a livable wage. We continue to come here pleading our case to you, asking you to see the humanity of caregivers and our clients, yet you still won't pay us a livable wage. The solutions to the care crisis that has and will continue to impact so many across California are right here in front of us. It's abundantly clear that the Board needs to make an immediate investment in IHSS, pay providers a livable wage, and begin repairing the cracks in our care infrastructure. But at what point will the needs of Sacramento's older adults and people with disabilities become important enough to take action? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just checking, is Erica here? Okay, Lupe.
Every week, I'm going to be here to give us a better deal. Do you blame us? Have you seen the prices on the gas? Have you seen the prices on groceries? Every week, you might as well get used to it, but to remember this, God does not like ugly. And the elections are coming and guess what? We're the voters. Think about that.
Thank you very much for having me today. I'm a District 4 President and IHSS recipient. My wife is my IHSS caretaker. I'm also a candidate for Board of Supervisors, District 4. I'm proud to be endorsed by SEIU 2015. I'm here today to again beg you guys to do the right thing and my hope is that by the time I get elected, this can already be taken care of so that I don't have to up on that dais then try to figure out how to help my homeless brothers and sisters here as they've laid out, so many of them are on the verge of being homeless. Often the way this is kind of framed is that we're here asking for an increased social safety net, which let me be clear, in this economy, I am for an increased social safety net and we should do that. But we're, what we're actually asking for is people who take care of disabled people who are changing diapers, giving medicine, bathing, feeding, doing laundry, taking to doctor's appointments, et cetera, are society's most vulnerable. And we're saying, can we make, can we get closer to a livable wage? Because we know that given this Board, an actual living wage is impossible. So it's like, how about $20 an hour so that at a minimum, food won't have to be something they have to cut? Right? My wife is my IHSS caretaker, so I see firsthand what it means. We have four kids and as she's making the lunches for my kids to go to school, she's getting me out in and out of bed each day, giving me a shower, clothing me so I can get ready to go on, on my campaign. And this is the lives for so many of these people here. They're having to sacrifice time with their family to go help people that desperately need help and are still fearing to be homeless? And the ineptness of this Board is like so frustrating because I know when I'm up there, I'll have, I'll have two allies that I hope to work with to make change, but you can just see the future that in 2026, we'll be figuring out how to deal with even more homeless people when we could have just ratified the contract needed to help these people who desperately deserve it, who are doing a great thing in society. Please give them what they deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you Brayden.
Okay, Meg. Meg.
And then is the overhead on?
My name is Meg White. I'm a resident of District 1. Phil Serna, that's you. And I'm here today to talk about a neighbor of mine, also a District 1 constituent, Kalen Footman. I'm here because I have several questions. First of all Supervisor Serna, is it the color of my skin or my bank account? Or do you just treat all of your constituents as disrespectfully as you treat me and my community? The ongoing treatment that I, as your constituent, have received from you in your office is reprehensible. The latest incident being your refusal to meaningfully return my phone calls and emails about what your office can do about my tax dollars being used to criminalize yet another black body over mental health. Ms. Footman and her family did everything our community services allow and Caitlin still ended up in jail. After an unjust arrest, she's stuck in a county jail, a jail that's under a federal consent decree for inhumane treatment specifically for people who are experiencing mental health problems. And no one in the public can see her or get her out for an undisclosed amount of time. This is what happens when someone in a manic state trusts the police. Do you understand why it can't be called paranoia if it's a reasonable fear? Her family has had no contact with her. Her attorney has had no contact with her. We're scared for her life as well as her long-term mental health. But like I said, I'm here to ask questions. If this is how we treat a black woman who's an educator, a second grade teacher, a black woman who's stable with zero record, who was held closely by her family and community, what can anyone else expect? Gabby Wallace. How many more community dollars do we have to spend on death and injury? Daryl Richards. How many more lives have to be lost? Jaime Narano. How many more families have to be completely crushed? Sharon O. Stingley. Before you fund a 24/7 non-police emergency response line for mental health emergencies? Brian Debs. And one last question. What can you do? What can all of you do to get fake Kalen Footman out of jail and into a mental health facility today? Michelle Shirley.
Thank you.
Okay, Bobby.
Madam Clerk, can you distribute that to the, to the Board? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bobby Wooton. I am a resident of Sacramento, California, and I come here to speak for Kalen Footman. Who is Kalen Footman? Kalen is a black second grade school teacher who has been working for the Natomas Unified School District for five years. What happened? While working at Paso Verde Elementary School, Kalen experienced racial discrimination and harassment to the point where it pushed her into, into a mental health crisis. She was denied mental health services. Law enforcement refused to provide mental health support after being contacted by her family several times. In a delusional state, she sent inappropriate text messages to school officials. Instead of receiving the medically necessary treatment she deserved, her mental illness was criminalized. She was put in handcuffs and thrown into a jail cell. Where is she now? Currently Kalen is being held in jail. She has not eaten or drank anything since Saturday 10/14/23. Kalen's mental health has deteriorated to the point that she is not allowed to meet with her attorney or family members. There is a court order to move her to a mental health facility, but the sheriffs have not safely complied with the court order. What can the community do? What I'm asking, and as you know, Phil Serna, you are, she's in your district. First off, please reach out to the Sheriff, Sheriff Cooper and make him aware that she has family out here who cares about her. In addition to, she needs help. This is a second grade teacher who has worked for Fortune Schools. She's been in the Tomis School District for five years and even bigger than that, she's my child's godmother. Her heart is so big, all she wants to do is teach her children, her students, that they are changers, they are people that can change the world and make a difference. So let's lead by example. Let's change what's going on in Sacramento. Let's, before they go to jail, let's get a licensed social worker out there to assess the situation so they can truly determine where they need to go, mental health hospital or to jail. Thank you guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, will you do, do me a favor? And I'm doing this now here so everyone can be witness to it. If you could please, at least have a phone call, or maybe Eric and you have a phone call with Sheriff Cooper to let him know or be aware that this has been brought up in, as an off-agenda matter by several speakers. I think that might help respond to some of what is being requested. Thank you.
Thank you Phil.
Okay, next we have Kay Harris.
You took me up on the invitation, didn't you?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I expect very kind words.
Of course, nothing less. I want to say good morning to everyone. I also want to say thank you to everyone who has shared thus far. I didn't know what to expect in coming to today's meeting, but here I am. Let's see, I'm going to stick to my notes today. I want to thank you for the personal invitation to attend today's meeting. Absolutely appreciated. I took you up on your offer and so I'm expecting the same. Okay, I am a resident of District 1, but I am a partner to all and that means all of the districts here. I want to say thank you. I know the members here sit on several boards. I'm able to have the conversation that I'm having today because I've attended SAC RT Board meetings, which I've met some of the representatives here and have a good rapport thus far and plan on continuing so. The actions that you all take, I know will take time. And when I say actions, when a request is made of you, I know things aren't always immediate and I absolutely understand that some requests are simpler, I guess, in terms and so we can act quickly, whereas others will take time. I want to say thank you today for District 1 and 2 for opening up the Guaranteed Income Program. I'm again, part of District 1 and I want to be able to share it with my community specifically. I know it's on the internet, but I wanted to make a small acts and see if there are flyers that are available that I can provide to my community. The deadline is October 31st and I want to make sure that everyone is aware. Everyone won't apply, but at least they're aware of the information that's available to them. That's basically it. I hope to just take a little reprieve from the strong energy that's in the room, make you all smile, provide a smile to you and just say thank you.
Thank you Kay. Supervisor Kennedy.
There we go. Quickly, as far as, yes, we will get you information, but you can also go on the local United Way website and they'll have that information as well.
Absolutely. So I was looking to share with the community. I'm aware that it's online. I know some may not have access, so I'm just looking to reduce that barrier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, thank you. And just, just for everyone else's edification, so it's not an inside joke, so to speak. We've had the speaker come before us several times at our Regional Transit Board meetings as of late. She's been phenomenal in terms of bringing to our attention some of the matters that RT executive staff need to note in terms of the Dos Rios Light Rail, proposed light rail station, as well as some existing conflicts with bus stops and no parking, street side conflicts. So what I'm, what I really want to stress is I want to thank you for all of your civil, civic participation. It's really impressive and I would really encourage you to explore the number of commissions that we have here in Sacramento County. They're volunteer, it's volunteer work, but it might be something you might find of interest depending on the subject matter and I would encourage you to do that and my office would be more than happy to help you navigate that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Serna.
Next we have Terry.
I hope I'm saying that right.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tara Harris and I am the mother of Kalen Footman. My heart is filled with so much emotion as you try to rear your child first to be honoring unto God and to do all of the things that is right. And in my daughter's path, she has done that. Beautiful person, teacher, community, feed the homeless, anything that she could do, she has done and including touching so many lives and giving them what they need to be successful in this world. I'm a little hurt that every system has failed. And so what I'm asking, and thank you Mr. Serna for reaching out for Sheriff Cooper, to have Kalen perfectly transferred to a mental health facility as per the judge's order and drop the charges against her that processed, that exploited her mental unhealthiness and jailing her with prioritize beings before medical attention. I'm asking, not only for my daughter, but so many others, prioritize that there is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, mental health intervention for all. Training the emergency responders to know that there are two places to take people when suffering mental illness crisis. suffering mental illness crises as opposed to going to jail. Support and prioritize other behavioral health drop-off sites, including those of substance use illness like wealth-based crisis and receiving for behavioral health. And create more mental health interventions throughout the city, and especially, and hold all emergency responders accountable to these facilities and to prioritize them over jail. I also feel that it's very important to support our educators as they continue to mold and shape our leaders and giving them the help and services that they need before they have to ask and before a crisis actually occur. We want to be preventative and not provide cure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harris. I'm quite certain that all five of us are going to be very interested to hear the results of the communication to the Sheriff's Department and are following this situation. So thank you for being here today.
Okay, is Erica here?
Yeah, she's here.
Okay.
Hello, Erica.
Hi, good morning. My name is Erica Narano. I'm here to remind you guys, to make sure you guys don't forget, and sweep my dad under the rug like everyone else gets swept under the rug. He was murdered by Sacramento Sheriff on 9/28/2022 during a mental health crisis. 23 seconds it took the deputy to play God and shoot my dad five times, killing him in front of my mom. I'm also here to stand with the family of Kalen. She deserves to get the proper help. She's a teacher. She teaches the future, and what is, what good is she in jail and being mistreated? She's not the first, I'm sure, of situations like this. My dad sure isn't the first of situations like this. You guys need to do better. We're human. I said that many times, we're human. Do better. This could be you guys. Mental health does not discriminate. It could be your mom, it could be your uncle, it could be your sister, it could be your Do better. Stop funding sheriffs to kill us. Fund a mental health 24/7 number to call people to come out. Do better. That's all I'm asking is do better. Phil, we asked you last year, and like I said, we've been swept under the rug. Remember my dad, Jaime Narano. I'm sure you guys have forgotten, but I'm not going to let him be forgotten. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like that concludes our off-agenda public comment, so that will bring us to our consent calendar.
Okay, for your consent items two through 42, I have a couple of notes. For item five, you're introducing an ordinance amending sections 2.115.300, 2.115.310, and 2.115.320 relating to contribution limits for an election years, for on-election years, and an aggregate limit pursuant to the review of biennial contribution limit adjustments, waiving full reading of the ordinance and continuing to November 7th for adoption, and approving the creation of a campaign finance ad hoc committee. For item six, you're introducing an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code, bless you, code repealing Chapter 2.25 relating to Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, waiving full reading and continuing to November 7th for adoption. For item 27, I do need a motion to continue this item to December 5th. This was to approve the attached salary resolution amendment to reallocate 1-point full-time equivalent waste management superintendent to a principal civil engineer and also a maintenance worker to a sanitation worker and a maintenance worker to an administrative services officer, too. So if I could get a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Frost? Unanimous vote. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, and then we needed a four-fifth vote for items two, three, and four, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, now I will take comments or questions from supervisors, starting with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sure there may be a public comment on the consent calendar, but I'd like to ask if there's consensus for item number five, to direct staff to round the numbers to the nearest one-hundredth when it's brought back, just for ease of accounting and tracking.
Certainly agree. Do we need a motion, or can you bring up, or do we need to continue this and you come back with different figures? No? Okay.
And then I would go ahead and move consent. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, no other, okay, no other supervisors with comments? Any public comment?
We do, we have a public comment for item nine. It's the authority to apply for and accept grant funding from the community project funding allocation in the amount of 1.5 million administered by the department. And so this is Charles.
Good morning.
Good morning. I met my best friend while he and his mom and his younger brother were going through the Mather Community Campus about 20 years ago. She's one of their greater success stories. They have about a 90, they, back then at least, had about a 96% chance of success. All the women that moved out of there eventually became housed homeowners and jobs. I mean, in her case, she became a RN and a surgical nurse within a few years after graduating from the Mather Community Campus. Not to say anything disparaging about what the program is now, but it's not the same program it was 20 years ago. 20 years ago, it was a program that had consolidated services in one location. Women could get the rehab that they needed, if they needed rehab. They can get help for their children, they can get counseling, job and skills training. Basically, everything was in one spot for these women, and it made it really successful. So it's something that I think we've had in Sacramento County before that's shown that when you co-locate services, it is proven to be successful in this area. And that's not, again, not to say anything disparaging about what the program is now. I think it's still a good program. It's just, if we're looking at the best programs that ever been in Sacramento County, this is the best program, was the best program that was ever here. And so it's looked, should be looked at again for being the model that we should be pursuing.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, just briefly, Charles, thanks for being here. We always appreciate your comments and your perspective. Might I also suggest that you contact your congressional delegation as that funding for those programs was significantly cut by the federal government. Thank you.
That concludes your public comments.
Okay, so no more comments from supervisors. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Could you remind me who made the second? Thank you. Unanimous vote.
Okay.
Okay, for item 43, this is the presentation of resolution recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
I'd ask Courtney and Julie to join me at the podium.
Well, good morning, and thank you all for being here. I am proud to present the resolution today, recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this is sponsored by the All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation. And for those of you who don't know, the All Be Aware is a Sacramento nonprofit organization founded in 2004 in memory of Alberta Albi Carlson, who died from breast cancer. Its mission is to provide life-saving breast cancer testing, prevention, education, advocacy, and compassionate support. Breast cancer is the most common form of internal cancer in women and the second most common cause of cancer death for women in the United States. And while most cases of breast cancer are diagnosed in women, more than 2,000 new cases of breast cancer are diagnosed in American men every year. Early detection offers the best chance for effective treatment, and All Be Aware provides mammogram services and breast health information to individuals living in Sacramento County. And you do amazing work. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we join with the communities and people from throughout California and the nation by recognizing October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Sacramento County. And further, we express our thanks and appreciation to all of you and the All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation for your commitment and compassionate work helping those affected and their families in battling and overcoming cancer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Courtney Quinn. I'm the Executive Director for the All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation. I also am a breast cancer survivor. So I just want to share a few bits of information with you all, and then I'm going to leave some information for each of the supervisors on what's happening with breast cancer specifically related to individuals in your districts. The couple of things I want to share is, as we've, as you've heard, it's one in eight women. So while we have three here today, we're representing so many individuals that our organization provides services to each year. So part of what we do is we help an individual who may not even realize they need a mammogram when we're out at awareness events such as the Sacramento Republic Game, meet individuals who realize we need to start mammograms beginning at age 40 and annually to have mammograms. Now, the difference is if somebody is younger than 40 and they have a family history, genetic marker, or a change in their breast, they need to get it seen earlier. I was 37 when I was diagnosed. I noticed my own lump. And so that is a part of the information we're sharing because we're seeing an increase in younger cancer. But there's some statistics that are happening here in Sacramento County that are alarming to me because we actually see higher death rates here in Sacramento County than we do compared to the averages in the state of California and in the nation. And we've got a long way to go to make our healthy 2030 goal. The other thing that we see is we have lower mammogram rates as well compared to the state and the nation. And those go hand in hand because we know when individuals get, are detected earlier, they are more likely to have better survival rates and also treatment of care. It's much easier for the doctors. So we partner with all four major hospitals in the area as well as a number of organizations. Tomorrow, we'll be at La Familia doing a collaborative project with a couple of different medical groups, as well as UC Davis, too. But I want to share that information with you. I also want you to know that next year is our 20th anniversary, so we are making big plans for 2024. And part of that is I'll be coming to each one of you to try to meet with you and your team to talk about how are we going to do even more services in the community. But thank you all for recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
So through the chair, I, the mortality rate, that's disturbing. Did not know that compared to other areas. Obviously, early detection is the key, really. I mean, the number one thing we can do. What do you attribute that to? Is it a lack of education, lack of public awareness? What would you attribute that to?
There's a handful of things. The numbers have actually worsened recently, and that's due to the pandemic. But regardless, Sacramento County was already in a problematic state. But part of it is there's a number of individuals who don't know they qualify for Every Woman Counts, which is a program, a state-run program with funding through CDC that allows individuals at certain income levels to be able to get free screening mammograms. And so that's part of the work that we do, is help to inform individuals. We get calls and/or communications from people every single day saying, hey, I've heard I need a mammogram, but I don't know where to go. And so we help them navigate through whether insurance covers it or if this Every Woman Count program covers it. If not, we do. And then I think one of the other challenges is there's still miscommunication about when to start getting mammograms. Every single time we do a breast health class, I meet somebody who is in their 50s that their doctor has never told them to get a mammogram. And I see that much more with populations facing health disparities. And as we have a very diverse community here in Sacramento County, that's also part of why we see this death rate higher.
Ms. Edwards, you know, maybe it would be a good idea to put together, if it hasn't happened already, Timothy Lutz and also Dr. Caserier, this organization, and include Kim Nave in there as far as for public outreach.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also through the chair. So I appreciate the annual reminder, and thank you for being here in chambers to share with us some of the daunting data. And thank you Supervisor Kennedy for, you know, helping to shed some light on what the county can and should be doing to work with All Be Aware and others that are doing everything we can for early detection. Question I had was, do we have any mobile resources for mammograms?
So the, right now, in the state of California, there is literally one mobile mammogram company that provides these services. There is some discussion about this happening within Sacramento County that it's not confirmed enough to share at this type of a meeting. The other thing, though, that we've actually moved away from doing the mobile mammography, instead, we're trying to help get individuals in to get their mammogram services. Because once we help an individual get established with medical care, we know it's actually going to do better for them, not just only in breast care, but other healthcare services as well.
Thank you for that. On a personal note, and I share this every year when we offer this resolution, that, you know, I lost an aunt, my grandmother, my mother, and my stepmother, all within seven years to breast cancer. And so this is certainly a disease that has affected me personally and my family, and that's why I've been proud to work with others on the Real Men Wear Pink campaign, that's the shirt today. And, you know, I think you should not just see us every year, but as you mentioned, you're going to come talk to us about some other initiatives, and we should be, all of us, everyone in the chambers, this side of the dais and that side of the dais, should be working diligently to make sure that this, this type of data doesn't go in the wrong direction. And it's very disheartening to hear that in Sacramento County, it seems to be so. Appreciate, again, everything that you do, and just hope that you lean on us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. What I'm going to do is just because I think it's important for us all to be able to push information, so I'm going to ask my colleagues, come down, let's take a photo together, and they'll give us all an opportunity to push more information about All Be Aware through our social media and our email platform for all of us. Yep.
On to item 44, and Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, this is the presentation of resolution declaring October 2023 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Manufacturing is a crucial part of our economy here in Sacramento and the nation, one that has been overlooked over the decades, and we've moved to a service industry focus as an economy. But here in Sacramento, we have over 4,000 manufacturers in the greater Sacramento region and 1,200 in Sacramento County alone. You know, the local manufacturers and educational systems, such as the Sacramento Valley Manufacturers Alliance, Los Rios Community College District, Power and Alliance, Sacramento State University, California Community Colleges, United States, it goes on and on about recognizing the importance of manufacturing for our economy on a national level, but also on a local level. of manufacturing for our economy on a national level, but also on a local level. Increasing the exposure of manufacturers, manufacturing careers within our local area to our students, educators, business owners, and politicians is needed to bridge the gap in skilled labor shortage and create viable careers and pathways for students and adults. We've seen what's happened with career tech programs in our school systems, as it's been diminished and cut. And so it's vitally important that we take, you know, this month as an opportunity to give a nod to manufacturing as careers and also, as I said, a vital part of our economy. So at this time, I'd like to ask Dean Peckham if he's here and Kevin McGrew, and there they are, to come up and present this resolution. But first, you can, if you'd like to say a few words.
I would like to say a few words. And I'd like to get a photo up here. Thank you very much.
By the way, Siemens is in District Two.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to mention that. First of all, I would like to say that as a manufacturer, we're very proud to share the month of October with breast cancer awareness. We're a little bit less known. We don't have our own color. But as I said, we're very proud to do that. Thank you, first of all, Vice Chair Kennedy and the entire board for the resolution for Manufacturing Month. My name is Kevin McGrew. I am the Director of Quality Management at Siemens Mobility, Inc., Rolling Stock. I am the Director of all quality activities and have been for 25 years. Business is booming. You may have heard us in the news last week. Amtrak President Roger Harris was here as we delivered or presented the first of 700 coach vehicles that we will be building in South Sacramento. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I see a severe lack of talent prepared to take on advanced manufacturing jobs of machining, welding, electrical, mechanical assembly, and test activities. I've joined with like-minded manufacturers to create the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance, specifically to focus on our common threat, lack of talented Sacramento region residents to take on these careers. Know this about manufacturing. We are a motor for wealth generation. For every $1 spent, we produce over $2.50 of output. We create community. The average employee in manufacturing, including benefits, is over $85,000 a year. We also provide critical benefits to those employees, including additional training to develop themselves and create even more opportunity for them and their families. We're highly regulated, so we have to compete, we have to figure out a way to compete in the worldwide market with severe and appropriate, and obviously restrictions for OSHA, labor, environment, and in some cases, taxation. We have an extreme brain drain going on. Over a half of million jobs are vacant right now across the United States. Sacramento region is no different. And we need help. The vast majority of the manufacturers you mentioned, Vice Chair Kennedy, are less than 50 members, 50 employees. They need help. And I've asked our Executive Director to say a few words about that.
Supervisor Kennedy, thank you very much. Again, my name is Dean Peckham. I serve as the Executive Director for the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance. Manufacturing Day was first organized about 15 years ago by the manufacturers across the U.S. as an opportunity for the manufacturers to open their doors to youth and young adults and inspire the next generation of manufacturing in the U.S. In this region, SVMA celebrates October. It's a little hard to do everything in one day. So we try and facilitate tours of manufacturers for high school and community colleges and these proclamations as well. We were organized, actually, in 2017, so we're a fairly young organization. As Kevin noted, we were formed by the manufacturers to address the need for a qualified and well-trained workforce through our partnerships with high schools, community colleges, supporting CTE programs across all the schools in the region, and encouraging high school students to look at the region's community colleges as a viable pathway to earn a living, support their families, their communities, and contribute to the next generation of manufacturing excellence in the region. We've also embarked on developing pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs to support the upskilling of the workforce. And in 2020, we supported launching the manufacturing training program for adults at the Charles A. Jones Skills and Education Center, part of Sac City Unified. It is an adult education school located at Stockton and Lemon Hill. We are also advocating and encouraging recruiting women into manufacturing as well. This has been historically a very male-dominated industry. We're trying to bridge that by supporting the schools, the training programs, and direct outreach into the communities, talking to individuals about the career pathways that are available for women. And we're also addressing it through recruiting our immigrant population into manufacturing. Many of these individuals come from their respective countries with skills. So we're trying to recruit them into the manufacturing workforce to support excellence in the region. As noted, there are over 4,000 manufacturers in our region employing about 37,000 people and about 1,200 in the county. Major manufacturers in Sacramento County, just so you're aware, Siemens Mobility, Hudamaki, Mary Ann's Baking Company, Velar Heating, Solar for America, Lion Electric, producing electric school buses. I think Twin Rivers Unified School District is the largest purchaser of those schools, of those buses in, across the U.S. Other companies in the biotech industry, Gemini Bio, Orca Bio, Kratos Defense, Tesco Controls, Microform Precision, Lycap Technologies, and last but not least, Carmazi Caramel Corn. Carmazi recently was a top-four finalist in the California Manufacturing Technology Association, made in, making it in California contest, competing against the likes of the Tesla Model Y, the James Webb Telescope, as well as products from Lockheed Martin. I think it illustrates the importance of food processing in California, that Californians appreciate their food as much as they appreciate and like their gadgets as well. So how can you support manufacturing in California and in our region? We're here, Sacramento Valley Manufacturing is here as a resource for your manufacturers. So be a, be a champion for manufacturing in the region. Refer your, your constituents over to SVMA. Support CTE training programs for adults. Support and advocate for the creation of an investment training fund for Sacramento County residents who are interested in a career in manufacturing. Enrolling them at Charles A. Jones. And share information about Charles A. Jones with your constituents. In conclusion, a very special thanks to Chairman Desmond, Vice Chairman Kennedy, and all of the Board of Supervisors for this proclamation and recognizing manufacturing.
And next year, Kevin, I promise I'm going to make Aqua Green the official shirt color for manufacturing.
I appreciate that. Thank you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That'll bring us to item 45.
Yes, this is your first timed item. This is the approval of city-county affordable housing plan.
Good morning. I think there's a PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, right.
Coming up. There it is. Thank you. So, good morning. Christine Waikert with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and I am introducing the Affordable Housing Plan for the city and county of Sacramento. The plan will also be presented to the City Council this afternoon for approval. So as you recall from our workshop in July, the plan was created in collaboration with the city of Sacramento, county of Sacramento, and Sacramento Steps Forward. SHRA served as the lead entity in the planning effort and engaged the consulting services of environmental science associates to assist. The Affordable Housing Plan is guided by the Local Homeless Action Plan, or LHAP, and the City and County Partnership Agreement and stakeholders. The LHAP was adopted in 2022 to coordinate efforts to address homelessness. And in January 2023, the city and county entered into the partnership agreement to address homelessness. And the adoption of this Affordable Housing Plan is a requirement of that agreement. So the Local Homeless Action Plan includes six strategies to address homelessness. Building and scaling a regional coordinated access system, focusing on rehousing, increasing permanent supportive housing, expanding prevention and diversion resources, investing in community services and delivery capacity, and ensuring adequate behavioral health services. The Affordable Housing Plan focuses on strategy three of the LHAP, which is increasing permanent supportive housing and rehousing opportunities. We received comments during the outreach for the plan on topics such as prevention and management of homeless encampments. We want to recognize the importance of these comments. And if they aren't addressed in the scope of this plan, they are addressed in other efforts such as the LHAP. So now I'd like to introduce Shannon Wages to walk us through the Affordable Housing Plan.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Shannon Wages. I'm a principal with Environmental Science Associates. And as Christine mentioned, we helped prepare the Affordable Housing Plan. And today, I'm happy to provide an overview of this plan. This is an important next step in advancing strategy three of the LHAP. As the reality is scarce affordable housing options for people experiencing homelessness limit the efficacy of the response system. Increasing permanent supportive housing options and opportunities will benefit people currently experiencing homelessness as well as the surrounding community of housed residents, businesses, and neighborhoods. Further, supportive housing solutions are cost-effective approaches to addressing homelessness when compared to the costs associated with an individual experiencing unsheltered homelessness. And we know, as Christine said, that keeping people housed is just as important as building and securing more housing prevent, more housing opportunities. An expansion of prevention and diversion resources are addressed in a separate plan under strategy four. While conducting outreach for this plan, valuable input was collected from the community, as Christine mentioned. All of the comments that we received were reviewed and incorporated as applicable within the parameters and schedule of the plan per the city-county partnership agreement. The main themes from the feedback included requests for quantitative data, a discussion of funding needs and limitations, connections to the city and county RENA obligations or regional housing needs assessment, strategies to connect providers to the larger response system, and considerations to support underrepresented populations who experience homelessness, including those over 55 and LGBTQIA+ community members. The Affordable Housing Plan was created to advance permanent supportive housing and rehousing solutions in the city and county of Sacramento. In order to accomplish this goal, the plan describes gaps or current unmet needs, measurable targets or goals, and activities related to the permanent supportive housing and rehousing systems, including current activities that are ongoing and proposed future activities. As the plan was developed, outreach, stakeholder meetings, the Sacramento Steps Forward gaps analysis, and the LHAP were used to identify gaps related to permanent supportive housing and rehousing. So the permanent supportive housing gaps are shown on the slide and include funding and development, increased developer capacity, innovation capacity to support new types of permanent supportive housing, and tracking and monitoring. The collaborating partners are currently engaged in a number of activities already to address these gaps, and these are all listed here, include, and they include providing funding for four projects that are at or near completion, using County Mental Health Service Act funds and HCD funds, or California Housing Community Development Funds, prioritizing the allocation of enhanced infrastructure finance districts, district funds, and the allocation of project-based vouchers to permanent supportive housing, offering fee waivers and deferrals for affordable housing and permanent supportive housing projects, promoting development of permanent supportive housing in any zone that allows housing, preserving affordable housing, updating the city of Sacramento mixed-income housing ordinance, continuing the streamlining and planning entitlement processes, and developing ballot initiatives and legislation to raise funds for affordable housing. So the Affordable Housing Plan includes measurable targets, as I mentioned, for both rehousing and permanent supportive housing. The measurable target for permanent supportive housing, also called priority number one, is to develop and fund a pipeline of 2,000 units of permanent supportive housing and other affordable units by the end of 2027. The proposed future activities that the plan collaborated, collaborators have identified to meet this target and address identified gaps are listed here and include completing zoning code amendments and a plan check process, developing partnerships, identifying and marketing public land for development, establishing a tracking process to monitor the production of new units, coordinating the timing of funding competitions amongst partners, creating or converting a minimum of 300 permanent supportive housing units and 100 new affordable housing units per year for five years. And it's important to note that this is just the first step. So the county and city have agreed to continue to meet on an ongoing basis until these targets have been achieved. As I mentioned above, outreach, stakeholder meetings, and existing plans and analysis were used to identify gaps related to rehousing. These gaps are listed here and include a system, a need for system coordination and mapping, and additional rehousing funding, expanded capacity for rehousing service providers, and operationalize and expanded capacity for CAL-AIM and LEAP. CAL-AIM stands for Expanded California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal, and LEAP is the Landlord Engagement and Assistance Program. And as with permanent supportive housing, the collaborating partners are currently engaged in a number of efforts to advance rehousing, and these are listed here and include providing rental housing is funding, rental assistance funding, conducting outreach to landlords regarding the housing choice voucher program, and continuing to implement the LEAP program. So the measurable target for rehousing, or priority number two, is to develop a pipeline of 1,100 rehousing opportunities by the end of 2027. The proposed future activities that the plan collaborators have identified to meet this target and address identified gaps are listed here and include establishing service standards and performance metrics, establishing funding levels, developing partnerships, developing a landscape analysis of the current rehousing capacity and future needs, securing additional funding, identifying and allocating funding for 29 full-time case managers and 220 rapid rehousing slots per year for five years, and designing and piloting a shared housing program. Finally, the Affordable Housing Plan includes opportunities for community members and public officials to stay up to date on the plan's progress. The plan will be reported on, on as part of the annual SHRA Affordable Housing Progress Report. Also, updates on the activities identified in the city, city or county agreements will be provided and led by the city and county of Sacramento. And finally, updates on the activities in the LHAP will be And finally, updates on the activities in the LHAP will be ongoing through Sacramento Steps Forward. And for questions related to the LHAP, contact information is on the screen, info@sacstepsforward.org. That concludes the presentation, and I just wanted to let you know that we have members from Sacramento Steps Forward and city and county here that have collaborated on this plan to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a few questions. I'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know who this is best directed to, so whoever wants to jump up, great. Housing Choice Vouchers. I read recently that there's a push to increase the number of vouchers that are available to people in Sacramento and throughout the country. But it seems to me that it's not a question of the number of vouchers at this point, it's the amount that the voucher is. I mean, I will tell you, I met with a fairly hostile landlord in the Avenue's neighborhood and asked, I said, "How many Housing Choice Vouchers do you have?" Section eight, which is what he knew. And he said, "None." He said, "Because I can get more off the street." Now, we used to be able to use those vouchers, and they were pretty well-accepted because there was the guaranteed income, even if it was a little below market rate, there was that guaranteed income. But now, because the housing costs and housing prices of rent is so high, that the housing vouchers are no longer competing on the open market. Is that a... Thank you, LaShelle, for coming to the podium. Is that a federal issue? Is that... I mean, again, I'm going to preface everything I said with, to me, I'm not as concerned about how many. I'm more concerned about how many aren't being, you know, accepted. What's... How do we get out of that?
Well, that's an excellent question, and I'm glad you raised it. So, one of the things that HUD has required us to do, I think it was about three years ago, was to go through a process of what we call small-area fair market rent. So, what it allows us to do is, instead of just looking at one rate for the entire city and county, we actually break that down by zip codes now. So, maybe in this particular instance, the landlord may not understand that we have shifted and moved. So, a voucher, let's say, in an area that has a higher cost in terms of the rental market, we pay more. So, it is actually adjusted through all of the zip codes throughout the city and county. So, I would encourage the unhappy landlord to reach out to us so that we can take a look at exactly that particular area and what we are actually paying.
Is that something that we get... I mean, is that driven by SHRA, or is that federal?
The federal government actually establishes it, but you will see that the rents that we are paying are quite competitive within the market.
Then why aren't people accepting them?
Well, we do. We have over 5,000.
Yeah, I know, I know. But we also have a lot that, you know...
I think there's also misperceptions about the program and the fact that we do look at those particular areas. We do a rent reasonable study to make sure that we're paying at that particular amount. And also landlords come in and they can request an increase each year if the rents are going up in their particular area. So, I think it's an education issue that, you know, we continue to do that. We have landlord outreach. We meet with landlord and apartment associations. We're going to step that up and meet more regularly so that we can really talk a lot about, a lot of the details and dispel some of the myths about the program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the presentation. I had some questions, though. Kind of the most poignant couple of slides really had to do with explaining what I would call accountability, right, in terms of the pipeline for various types of affordable units with very specific targets. So, I want to... I don't know who wants to reply, but when I start seeing that, I think it's appropriate on one hand because it is measurable and it's going to hold all of us accountable. On the other hand, it sets an expectation for the public. And, you know, I want to make sure that we're pushing the envelope as hard as we can, but that we don't set ourselves up to come back, you know, five years from now, and we've completely missed the mark because, you know, we were more interested in communicating the need, which is obviously very great. But I want to understand that balance and how it's kind of incorporated into the plan.
Right, Supervisor Serna, thank you. So, the pipeline plan is about 400 affordable housing units per year during the five-year period, which comes the 2,000 units you're referencing. A 4,000... Oh, sorry, 400 a year is broken into two different categories: 300 permanent supportive housing, so homeless housing, and 100 affordable. You know, we have done a lot of looking at what it costs to create an affordable housing unit and feel that 400 a year is something that's achievable. It is a stretch, but we do want to make sure we set a goal that we can make, but that's a little bit, you know... It is within our reach, but we don't... We want to make sure that we're setting it high enough that we can, you know, try to achieve that. You know, I think some of you might think it's too high or too low, but that's one we think we can achieve.
And I appreciate that. I think we should be aggressive. But, you know, having worked in the housing industry and certainly my experience here as a supervisor over the years tells me that there are so many unknown hurdles, right? We can have all the best intentions, but there could be a CEQA issue, there could be a neighborhood opposition issue, there could be, you know, a lack of public properties. I noticed that was one of the bullets in the slides. And I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer here, but it just... There's a lot that has to align to make those measurable targets achievable. And I just think we need to be very clear with the public that these are aggressive targets, that we're going to do everything we can to try and make, but we're going to need a lot of help doing that. And then, on a related matter, and hopefully Mr. Smith back there can appreciate this one. This, when I see the need to have these targets and then the resources necessary to plan them, right now, we have a planning department that is already stretched extremely thin. Can't speak for the city of Sacramento, but for county of Sacramento, we have way too many vacancies, I think, you know, if you want to call it project load. I think it's extraordinarily high right now, and we've got so many other planning initiatives going on. Is there any concept of what this means for the county in terms of additional planning resources to help make this achievable?
Well, I could defer to Todd if he'd like to come up, but I will tell you, as far as affordable housing goes, and SHRA is working with the county planning department, we work very closely together. We monthly go over projects that we're financing and see where they are with the approval process. But I do know it's a lot, so I'll let Todd respond.
Good morning, Supervisors. Todd Smith, Planning Director. I absolutely appreciate the question, Supervisor Serna. It's probably on the minds of all the board members. We are actively working to fill those vacancies. We have been for many months. And as Christine indicated, we do meet and coordinate on all the affordable housing projects that are in our pipeline, whether they're discretionary or non-discretionary. Some of the activities that we're undertaking as staff are in alignment with not just this plan and its goal, a stretch goal, aggressive goal, but attainable goal, but also with the board's Development Review Process Initiative. One of the things that we're working on in that front is figuring out ways to streamline not just the secret process, but also the development entitlement process, excuse me, figuring out ways through our zoning code amendments and other mechanisms that we can reduce those barriers to get projects through that pipeline faster, which then in turn results in reducing that project workload, as you indicated, Supervisor Serna.
And I appreciate that. But, I mean, no one in this room can appreciate it more than you, Todd, that if we don't have the people to do the work, it's going to be a plan that gathers dust. And I don't think there's anyone that's interested in a plan that just takes up shelf space here. So, my last question is, how does this aggressive plan to hit these targets, how does it help simultaneously, if at all, help us meet the city and the county's RENA numbers?
Yeah, it will absolutely help meet the RENA numbers if we create the 400 new units every year with the city and county.
How does it compare, though, to what the RENA targets are currently versus the plan's targets?
So, the overall, maybe Todd wants to speak more of this, but for the sort of the affordable housing RENA goal for this housing element, it's about 7,000 units. So, this will help, but I'm not sure if it will completely meet. Of course, the housing element is a longer period of time. This is a five-year plan.
Right.
Todd?
Yeah, I would just add on that although this is a component of that, it is not intended to meet the entirety of the county's RENA obligation for this income category. And I know that in the staff report for this item, it acknowledges that SHRA will be reporting back on an annual basis. And you all know that we report back on the housing element implementation every year around March as well. So, those are the two mechanisms and reporting opportunities where we can show that progress toward meeting our RENA obligation. And I'm going to be optimistic here and hopeful and say that when we do this in the upcoming years, that number that's low, has been low in the past years, on the bottom of our slide, on the lower-income categories, will be much higher.
And then, lastly, for county executive, and it relates to the staffing question, I would very much like to see how this plan's implementation will be referenced in the recommended budget. And, you know, and I'm not sure if you'll be here for that, but the, you know, the person that's in your post should be taking copious notes about the import of this plan. And if it doesn't come with budgetary resources, i.e. FTEs, staff in the planning department, I'm going to really question how committed we really are if we're not going to, you know, try to link and connect those resources to make, again, this plan implementable.
Excuse me, thank you. And yes, I will not be here, but I will relay this information to whomever is my successor.
Yeah. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Christine, I got a question. On page 22 of the plan, where you talked about the RENA allocation and some of the permitted units, I mean, obviously, this does not include the recent project home key approvals from this board, two projects in unincorporated Sacramento County, one of which I know is still uncertain. Is that accurate?
That's correct. This does not reflect anything actually being completed this year, I think this year, for sure in 2024.
Okay. And how many units are those combined, those two project home keys that the board supported?
The... So, okay, the R and S are 124 units and the super... Or is that the super eight? Together, about 200 units, a little over 200.
Okay. And then, I really appreciate the questions about the flexibility of the vouchers, because that's something that came up on this NACO Housing Task Force that I participated in. You know, everybody, several jurisdictions brought that up and the need for more flexibility. But it sounds like the feds, that's really not an impediment for us as much as maybe people think. It's really a matter maybe of educating landlords. And then, in terms of Supervisor Serna's questions that dealt specifically with staffing, appreciate that as well, because I know there's a lot in here about the land use and the zoning implications, but obviously, none of us build these affordable housing ourselves. And it's one of the reasons we had a board retreat not long ago, to hear directly from some of these affordable housing developers. And the delay at the county, partially as a result of vacancies, is a big part of that. Are there other components of the plan that talk about things that the city and county can be doing to lower the cost or lower the delay and make opportunities more attractive to affordable housing developers?
I think for the county's perspective in the plan, there is more investigation to see if we can do more affordable housing fee waivers for affordable housing projects, things like that, and streamlining. Those are probably the most relevant things.
What about any... Because I also see, I think, I mean, you talk about the average cost of a door, $540,000. Is that in California, or is that just Sacramento?
Those are the costs in Sacramento most recently.
It's just Sacramento. And, I mean, I just think that... And I was looking at it for it in the plan. Are there any suggestions for any possible regulatory changes or other changes that could try to bring that down? Because it just, that's such a... You hear that all the time, that is such a daunting amount. This isn't... We can't just look at, okay, how can we get more money to meet that need? Is there a way... Are there any strategies, either from an advocacy perspective or something we can control locally where we can bring those costs down?
So, a lot of those costs are associated with the operation of the units that are sort of financed upfront. And we've, you know, been really fortunate to work very closely with county behavioral health, seeing some mental health services dollars put in for things like some of the case management services. So, with the county providing that, it sort of takes off the pressure financially from the project to pay for that directly instead. So, I think we'll continue to look for opportunities like that, working with Sacramento Steps Forward and the county especially. Those are kind of the things, making sure we can get those operational costs paid for. We too put project-based vouchers in just about all of the homeless projects, which does help with the rental assistance as well. So, I kind of continue to work on those kind of things, I think, would be the most helpful.
Okay. And I'll always be interested in any ideas you have, strategies, either local or state level, where we can try to reduce the hard costs, you know, for developers and regulatory costs, so... Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I'm going to go back to the Housing Choice Vouchers and put a human face on it. I was recently approached by a married couple who are living in our Safe Stay communities, and their question was, "I have a voucher, and I'm staying in a Safe Stay community, and we got to do better." Getting, whether it's educating landlords, I don't know what the answer is. I expect, you know, you guys are smarter on this stuff than I am, but it's too many times, and I'm sure that my four colleagues will say the same thing, they get calls and say, "I have a voucher, and I can't do anything with it. Nobody will accept it." And that's more of a statement. I don't know that there's anything you need to say here, LaShelle, but...
Well, I just wanted to point out, one of the things that HUD did was issue us emergency housing vouchers. So, they were a very special type of voucher, that they actually gave us funds to hire navigators. And so, if you compare people who had an EHP or emergency housing voucher versus someone who didn't, the success rate for those with those vouchers was much higher because they had those levels of support. They had someone who could actually approach a landlord on behalf of the client. They could talk about strategies that would really assist them into getting into housing and knowing exactly where to look in those neighborhoods, which is really what our voucher holders, especially those who are homeless, need. And so, a part of this plan also does, you know, the coordination with the LEAP program, which is a landlord engagement program, so that we can really try to use those type of resources and learn from the successes that we've had in those type of programs. So, I think you've hit on the core of what is needed to help people transition from homelessness into housing with a voucher, and that is additional supports on that front end.
And do we... This may be for Emily. I don't think she's there here. There she is. When we do intake into our shelter system, whether it's Safe Stay or any other shelter, do we specifically ask the question, "Do you have a housing voucher?"
Yeah, I mean, certainly a part of all of our shelter case management includes creating a housing plan, which includes, "Do you have a voucher? Are you in line for a voucher?" or other subsidy programs. So, yeah, and so, we, almost all of our shelters with certainly Safe Stays, that's a very intentional part of the case management plan.
Good, thank you. And then, finally, you know, following on Christine's comment on fee waivers, I hope we pursue that with every jurisdiction. We did a project for, through No Place Like Home, in which, you know, we paid the city of Sacramento almost a million dollars in fees to get people off of their streets, you know, and... You know, and it just does not make sense. And I'm owning it here, too, because it could be switched and we'd do the same thing. So I mean, I think every local jurisdiction needs to get together. And I don't know, maybe you do this through Secog or whoever to get everybody in the room and agree that, you know, charging each other to get homeless people off the street is a stupid idea. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, I don't see any additional questions from Supervisors at this point, so we'll go to public comment.
I have about three public comments. Jeffrey Powell?
Morning, Jeff.
Morning, morning. Hello, everybody. You may know me, Jeffrey Powell. I'm a homeless navigator, substance advocate. I work with SHRA, been at Calamine Services in Sacramento County for about 15 years. I'm a filmmaker. Some of you have been in my documentaries. Some of you spoke on the panel, seeing my documentaries. I want to talk to you a little bit about the Shelter Plus Care Program. The Shelter Plus Care Program seemed to be eliminated by the Housing Choice voucher. It was actually not per zip code. It may still be present. They're not, don't have open enrollment, I don't think anymore. And they've eliminated some of the case management aspects of it with the supervision of the signature and the kind of thing of what they're going to do for the next year ongoing. I've seen this to be a problem in the community. In the last 10 years, there's been a shift of wraparound services and continued care with the model of housing first. To me, it's just been a problem. We talked a little bit about safety in the community, landlords not taking the voucher. I actually see it's because not of that case management and not that navigation services that basically they've already admitted to that has been a problem. Now, the emergency voucher system is working, the navigation process. I'm asking that the county and the SHRA relook and take a look at the Shelter Plus Care voucher. It seemed to be in the last 10 years. Originally, it was made for HIV, I believe, and the AIDS pandemic, maybe separate one. Okay. So I kind of came in a little bit late, but I know that the shift kind of took place once these funds kind of were allocated. And the fact that the El Hogars and the turning points and the case management took a step to the side and said, hey, we're no longer going to navigate, we're no longer going to sign on this stuff, we're no longer going to give you a yearly plan, we're no longer going to come visit your house, you know, monthly, that sort of thing. And it's been really hard for individuals like me to take the standard Housing Choice vouchers and be able to help these individuals because we're not looking at mental health. We're not looking at drug addiction. We're not looking at getting these guys well, and it's a problem. I just want to make sure that the people that are in the trenches, that are out there advocating for these pre-people and navigating services, that it helps. Here's one other thing I want to say before we go.
Can I wrap up?
I actually was on the Housing Choice voucher. I actually was on the Shelter Plus Care voucher. And I stand here today as a filmmaker on Amazon Prime, Peacock, navigating services that that program does work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Supervisor Hume, after public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Cook. I'm the Executive Director at the Sacramento Housing Alliance. And thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Affordable Housing Plan. This plan could be an important step in changing the status quo, especially because it recognizes that permanent supportive housing is the ultimate solution to ending homelessness and that rapid rehousing strategies must be strengthened. However, the plan must have more specific commitments and objectives to ensure its goals can be measured and realized. Specifically, we recommend the plan for committing, we commend the plan for committing to coordinate SHRA funding with other funding partners, including state funders. This is an important action that will support competitiveness of applications for supportive permanent housing in the city and county. The plan sets an objective to develop and fund a pipeline of 2,000 permanent supportive housing and other affordable units by 2027. This is not sufficiently ambitious enough considering the scale of the crisis and that this is a goal for both the city and the county. In addition, the priority should be for permanent supportive housing. The plan is unclear how much of the 2,000 units will serve that need. All of the activities in Table 10 and 11 must include more specificity around the actions that various parties will take and include quantified objectives regarding outcomes. Without more specific information, it is not possible to assess the benefit of the actions nor effectively track outcomes. Examples include, but are not limited to, Table 10, Activity 5. This activity should occur sooner and should have more specificity to describe how SHRA will encourage permanent supportive housing. Activity 8, the activity should specifically describe initial policy that state legislative priorities to be explored. Will SHRA, the city and county pursue these priorities even if a cooperation agreement cannot be agreed upon? And Activity 9, this is one of the most important commitments in the plan that should include more detailed steps to demonstrate how a minimum of 300 new or converted permanent supportive housing units will be built annually. We also recommend that the plan establish an ongoing working group of permanent supportive housing developers to get regular feedback on the challenges they face, including with the coordinated entry system. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Lee Miller?
Morning, Lee.
Good morning. The short one. So.
You can pull the mics down. There you go, so we can hear you.
How's that? So as a former member of the Vineyard CPAC for three and a half years, I've often observed, and this is just merely an observation, but something that I kind of found weird, okay? We would go ahead and approve projects that were for affordable housing. And then by the time it reaches your desk, somehow it is flipped over to app market. I don't know what the process is, but I've asked the question several times from the planning folks and also when I used to meet with Supervisor Natoli. But I don't, and maybe it has to do with rising costs, maybe it has to do with not doing a good job on the estimate by the builders. I don't know, okay? But I do know that all these, there have been many, many affordable housing projects put in front of us at the Vineyard CPAC. And I'm sure that maybe this happens at the other CPACs also. And then somewhere down the line, they get changed to app market. So if we're going to do affordable housing, there must be some mechanism in there for it to change to app market. Whether it's being done on purpose, I don't know. But I think that the board or somebody on the planning department needs to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
That concludes your public comments.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I appreciate the briefing that I had on this plan. And so a lot of the things that I'm going to bring up, we've already talked about, but I want to say them in open session so that I'm on record as having been concerned. First and foremost, thank you for bringing this Affordable Housing Plan forward. I know that it's a new requirement of the state. But having this five-year plan at least starts to provide some strategic guidance on how we're going to meet our critical housing needs. And so at the front end of this, let me say, we need to build more housing, all housing. If we build more housing, then all housing becomes more affordable. So that's just kind of an important thing to kind of keep in the back of our mind as we look at this. And I appreciate that this plan specifically provides process mapping for our constituents and those people who need housing, for our landlords and our developers, as well as for you folks and for us to inform how we are going to create this pipeline. And that's an important consideration as well that I'll get to, is that we're talking about a pipeline. And then looking at where streamlining can occur and how do we improve processes and bring those costs down that the Chair was mentioning. And so our county is working on development process improvements. And given, you know, that a big portion of this plan is going to be interfacing with private sector and nonprofit developers, I think we ought to have metrics that measure whether or not we're improving our processes in addition to simply funding more doors. And I think that's important to look at how we consider opportunities to find efficiency improvements that allow us to create more housing, that it's not always just looking at funding constraints. Is there a way to get more bang for our buck? And so, you know, with respect to that, you know, I recognize that there's an oversight committee within SHRA and that they will be talking about some of these issues. And so potentially, if we can expand that conversation to examine that space of what else can be done in a non-dollar-related way to allow for the increase in production. And so, you know, I think that's going to be important when we talk about metrics and how we're measuring outcomes, that it's not just, as was mentioned, pegging it to X number of units. Because somebody comes forward and says, this year, you've only produced 100 units. Yes, but we have 550 in the pipeline for next year. And so we're going to be over, you know, on an aggregate, we're going to be over, right? And so I think it's important that we look at that. But we can also say, we've shaved, you know, five months off of the processing or we have whatever we've done that makes it easier as well. And I think that's some of the things that we're seeing come out of the state is how do we reduce the, you know, bureaucratic burden that is placed on getting these projects built, as was mentioned by Ms. Miller of, you know, are there things that are making it infeasible as this is moving through the process? And so it's, you know, I mentioned that as far as this is a pipeline number. But I would say, and I'm probably going to catch some flack for saying this, but I wouldn't focus so much on the split that's called out in the plan of PSH versus affordable. And the reason being is because PSH is obviously a very intensive type of housing that once those units get absorbed, they're absorbed for a long time. And so then really, unlike a traditional affordable housing, there isn't the opportunity for turnover as people move into regular traditional housing. And so, so, you know, I mean, obviously, our unsheltered population, we need to be addressing that with this. But we also need to be addressing our students, our workers, our young professionals, first responders, the folks that they need to be able to get into the housing cycle and create that track record. And so, you know, from a very deep in the weeds perspective, and we went over this in my briefing, one of the shortfalls, I think, of this plan is that when we look at the cost per door, whether that's, you know, in a conversion or in new construction, it seems to me to be reverse engineered from a here's how much funding we need to apply and from these different sources and not necessarily looking at what are we getting with those dollars. And so when we talk about hard costs, soft costs, operational reserves, all of the things that go into driving that cost, I'd like to know those numbers and so we can see whether we shave those, you know, if it's an exorbitant developer fee, whatever it is. What's behind that number, not just this is how much funding sources we can put towards that? You know, that then speaks to our buying power. And obviously, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we saw issues with supply chain and inflation. And so there's these things that I think we can point to that paint a broader picture than simply, here's how much it is and here's where the funding comes from. And so I want to really get into the weeds on this relative to, in the strategic portion of the plan, under future activities, policy-related, it says, explore the adoption of a residential vacancy tax. I am absolutely opposed to that. I'm opposed to the concept of it. I'm opposed to a vacant parcel tax. I think there are too many variables into why somebody doesn't have a development project coming forward or why they don't have their property fully leased up. And I think that if we are compounding on that by trying to squeeze more blood from that turnip or juice out of that lemon, you know, we could be creating a more hostile situation where they're going to be less likely to accept vouchers or whatever the situation is. So I think that's a very heavy-handed approach and I won't support it if it comes forward. I guess that's about enough. You know, I just, I appreciate the work that you're doing. I appreciate the collaboration between SHRA, Sacramento Steps Forward, the city and the county. And I would hope that this is a living, breathing document that we revisit so that the next one will be more informed and maybe paint a broader picture. Thank you. Appreciate you standing at the podium the whole time while I just pontificated.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Any closing comments, Christine?
No.
And you need action from the board to approve the plan?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Item 46 is to approve and authorize submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development the 2024 One Year Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Program and Emergency Solutions Grant for Projects and Programs, Amendment of Prior Years' Action Plans, Amendment to the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Budget, and Authorization to Award and Execute a Five-Year Consolidated Plan Consultant Contract.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Green. I'm the Federal Programs Manager at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And today I'll be presenting the 2024 Annual Action Plan for Federal Programs. As a reminder, we had two workshops throughout the year where I presented the estimated available funding, eligible activities, and presented a draft project list. Today, I'll be providing a high-level overview of the federal programs, process, and HUD requirements, briefly go over the 2023 accomplishments, and describe the 2024 action plan. As a high-level overview, SHRA has been delegated authority by the county to administer the HUD Formula Program Grants. And as part of that, there are steps that HUD requires us to take. First, grant recipients are required to certify annually that we will affirmatively further fair housing and incorporate purposes and policies of the Fair Housing Act into our planning processes. In compliance with these requirements, in 2019, the county, along with surrounding municipalities, completed a regional analysis of impediments to fair housing, or AI. And that identified barriers to fair housing in the community and actions that can be taken to overcome those barriers. The findings of the AI were then incorporated into the consolidated plan, which is a five-year planning document, which HUD requires us to complete that describes the community needs and identifies a long-term strategy to meet those needs. The current consolidated plan was completed and approved in 2019 after an extensive amount of community outreach and consultation, and it covers the years 2020 through 2024. In 2024, we'll be developing the new consolidated plan, which will cover the years 2025 through 2029. Then each year, HUD requires that the county approve an action plan which identifies funding resources and specific activities, projects, and programs that will be undertaken to meet the goals and objectives in the consolidated plan. The action plan describes how the various funding sources will be used, which include the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, or HOME, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is ESG. The primary categories that CDBG funds include public facilities and infrastructure, housing, public services, grant planning and admin, and capital reserve. HOME is used for rehab and construction of affordable housing, and ESG is used to address and prevent homelessness. So as an example of an accomplishment that was achieved in 2023 for CDBG infrastructure improvements is the Jack Davis Park Shade Structure Project. This was part of a multi-year effort to conduct park improvements and expansion at Jack Davis Park. And this phase included replacing the plaza concrete and installing a new shade structure. For public services, we provide a variety of safety net programs. This slide provides an estimate of the number of people and households that will be served by those programs in 2023 or that have been served by those programs in 2023. Those programs include Meals to Seniors through the Meals on Wheels program, homeless and housing assistance through our Rapid Rehousing activities, home repair programs through SHRA's Home Repair Program and Rebuilding Together, as well as providing operational funding for shelters. Now looking forward to 2024, the next few slides go over the estimated entitlements for the various funding sources, the proposed CDBG allocations by funding category, and the proposed infrastructure projects to be funded. This slide shows that we anticipate receiving, or what we anticipate receiving from HUD for each funding source. And this is an estimate based on previous year's allocations. Overall, we anticipate receiving approximately $10 million in the county. I also want to note, in addition to our entitlement funds that we receive in 2024, other CDBG resources in the action plan include reprogrammed funds from previous year's capital reserve and program income, which is income we received from past CDBG loans. So our amount, our total amount available for CDBG, including all sources, is about 5.0. for CDBG, including all sources, is about $5.6 million. And for HOME, additional resources include program income, which will add an additional $300,000, bringing our total home resources to $3.9 million. This table shows an overview of the proposed 2024 CDBG allocations by category. These categories include infrastructure and public facilities improvements, housing development, and homeownership, which is allocated to multifamily rehabilitation, and home repairs for low- to moderate-income homeowners, public services, which is used for Meals on Wheels and other homeless activities, grant planning and admin, which is for staffing and the planning effort for the consolidated plan, as well as fair housing activities, the Agreement Cities, which provides funding to non-entitlement jurisdictions within the urban county, and then we also always include a capital reserve in case any of the projects go over budget. From the action plans' proposed allocations, I'll highlight the proposed infrastructure and public facility improvements. So, these projects include the Fruit Ridge Sidewalk Improvements Project in District 1. This project focuses on locations within 14th Avenue, Stockton Boulevard, Parker Avenue, and 44th Street, and includes design and construction of sidewalks, including ADA and pedestrian improvements. We also have the Old Florentine Park Sewer Line Improvements Project in District 1, which includes design and installation of sewer line for bathroom at the Old Florentine Park. The Floor and Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project in District 2 will be a long floor and road between Franklin Boulevard and Power Inn, and this includes installation of bike lanes, upgraded traffic signals, ADA improvements, and roadway lighting. The North Watt Avenue Pedestrian Improvements Project in District 3 is within an area bounded by Watt Avenue, Wynona Way, Myrtle Way, and Roseville Road, and includes design and construction of sidewalk infill, streetlights, curb ramp, and traffic signal improvements. The Watt Avenue Complete Streets Project in District 3 is on Watt Avenue between I-80 and Roseville Road, and includes design and construction of buffered bike lanes, separated pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, landscape medians, improved transit, street lighting, and signalized intersections. White Away Sidewalks in District 3, this is on White Away between Alta-Arden Expressway and Markston Road, and will include design and construction for sidewalk infill, roadway drainage, ADA curb ramps, and streetlights. The Elkhorn Boulevard Complete Streets Project in District 3 and 4 is on Elkhorn Boulevard from Watt Avenue to Don Julio Boulevard, and includes design and installation of signal modifications, ADA improvements, bikeway, green striping, bus turnouts, ADA accessible bus stop, and sidewalk infill. And the Rosemont Area Streetlights Improvement Project in District 5 will be between Kiefer Boulevard and Tally Ho Drive, and includes design and construction of streetlights. And finally, the Walnut Grove ADA Restroom in District 5, this is adding additional contingency funds to complete the installation of an ADA restroom, which is located within the public parking lot on Dice Street between C Street and Bridge Street in Walnut Grove. In addition to infrastructure projects, the other two main categories we fund in the action plan are housing and public services programs. And for those programs, we propose to continue funding the ongoing programs that we have been. So, for CDBG, these include Meals on Wheels, homeless shelter activities, and this is at the Mather Community Campus, the home repair programs, affordable multifamily housing rehab, and the fair housing activities. For ESG, we fund rapid rehousing through VOA, or Volunteers of America, and the Mather Community Campus Shelter. And for HOME, we fund new construction and rehab of affordable multifamily housing. So, this concludes my presentation. We're asking you to approve the 2024 Annual Action Plan, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Senator Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so, we do the home repair program. How does that work? Do we do like an RFP to determine who it is that does the work and all that? I mean, how's it work?
So, there's the SHRA Home Repair Program, which is administered by SHRA, and there's an application process, so people can apply online, or there's a phone number that they can call.
Okay. I guess my reason for asking is that, you know, at least in District 2, and I believe District 1 as well, that Habitat for Humanity is doing a lot of really good work in that area. And I think that, you know, the home repair and minor repair program is actually a homelessness initiative, frankly. It can often be the difference between a person being housed and not being housed. So, I would encourage you to somehow reach out to Habitat for Humanity. They do very good work, and I think it a very economic way of doing it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Senator Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Completely unrelated to the topic at hand, why does the county not administer its own CDBG monies?
I don't actually know the full history of that. I do know that we granted that authority to SHRA via resolution, and it's been this way for a number of years now.
Okay. Looks like somebody's approaching who maybe does know the history.
Since 1982. A part of the formation of SHRA, when the County Housing Authority, the City Housing Authority, and all of the redevelopment agencies all were structured under one entity, a part of that was administering the federal programs, because the Housing Authority, obviously, is a federal program. So, in 1982, that was given to SHRA by both the city and the county.
Okay. By federal mandate, or just as a part of the creation?
That was locally in the creation of SHRA.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we don't have any public comment on this item.
We do not.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move to approve.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay. For item 47, this is County Service Area Number 1, Zone Number 1, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for 1500 Mission Avenue.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering here to present this item, and we also have folks from DOT to answer any questions that may come up. So, the 1500 Mission Avenue Project is located on Mission Avenue, approximately 1,100 feet south of Arden Way, and proposes a two-lot split of the existing parcel. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding of the street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number 1 for unincorporated Sacramento County. And as a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process. And in response to that request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on September 8. Currently, the project site consists of a single parcel in the safety light-only benefit category, and has an annual assessment of $2.56. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light benefit category for residential parcels. Based on current rates, the service charge for this fiscal year will be $59.52 per parcel. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the protest ballot.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. No comments from supervisors, so I will do that now. We'll open the public hearing. Do we have any?
We do not.
We don't have any? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk?
Okay, I'll go ahead and tabulate the ballot. I've received one ballot. From the legal owner of Christopher and Colleen Wink, parcel number 28900760010000, site address 1500 Mission Avenue, Sacramento, California 95608, and they are in favor of the service, the change.
Great, thank you. I also have resolution fill-ins to read. So, in the resolution, Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Okay. No other comments from supervisors, so the chair will then move approval of the resolution. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Joe.
Item 48 is the Presentation on Health Services: Health and Racial Equity Initiatives.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. Really happy to be here this morning to talk about some of the initiatives that have been underway within Department of Health Services regarding health and racial equity. Within the department, this has been a strong focal point for us, just recognizing the need to address inequity across our communities, make sure that we're providing culturally relevant and respectable services, and also that we are addressing disparities in health outcomes across the community. This morning, two presenters, I'm Dr. Olivia Casiri, Public Health Officer, and Dr. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director, will each talk about some of these initiatives underway within their respective divisions.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Casiri.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Dr. Olivia Casiri, Public Health Officer. And as Tim Lutz has pointed out, we're here to give an update on some of the work that is ongoing in public health related to health and racial equity. So, what you have here is a map of the Healthy Places Index, and it shows, the dark areas show areas within Sacramento County where we have worse health outcomes. They also correlate with areas where we have a larger percentage of communities of color and disadvantaged communities. The Healthy Places Index is a project of the Public Health Alliance of Southern California. It's a data and policy platform that was created to advance health equity using open and accessible data. The HPI maps data at the census tract level on social conditions that drive health, such as education, job opportunities, and also other conditions such as clean air and water, and other indicators that are associated with life expectancy. What this mapping shows is that where we live strongly is strongly tied to measures of well-being and life expectancy. Health outcomes and conditions that support health are strongly tied to neighborhood environments and community conditions, which are in turn strongly linked to race. The Sacramento County Public Health Strategic Plan, one of the, in the plan, one of the priorities is championing health equity, and by that, being able to strengthen the organizational structure within the division with increase in staff capacity and fostering community partnerships. Building internal infrastructure is critical to lay the groundwork and to build and sustain external partnerships. You will also find that the plan that we have in public health aligns really well with state public health department's equity plan, as well as the CDC equity plan. So, how do we reach our North Star? We are moving towards equity and justice. Health equity means that everyone has a fair and just opportunity to live the healthiest life possible. Equity is not the same as equality. And to optimize opportunities, those with worse health and fewer resources need more efforts expended to improve their health. This is a quote from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And the figures that you see are an attempt to explain the differences between inequity, where in the first box, you see that the two individuals are trying to reach the fruits, and the fruits are falling on only one side. And the tree is also bent. When you look at equality, both individuals were given the same ladder, type of ladder, and one individual is much more easily able to reach the fruit, and the other one is still struggling. When you look at equity, you can see that the person, one person has a longer ladder, and that has enabled that person to also be able to reach the fruit. And when you talk about justice, that's where you have additional infrastructure that actually helps to straighten the tree, so that both have equal opportunity. There are several steps that we can take to reach our goal of equity and justice, and some of those, as we mentioned, is being able to build the internal infrastructure, being able to work with consultants, and building sustainable relationships inside and outside of the county. I wanted to speak a little bit about shifting power, because some people might ask what that means. A great example that we have that has worked in Sacramento County is actually the reducing African-American child deaths, where the community brought forward disparities in outcomes, health outcomes, for African-American children. And the Board of Supervisors allocated money towards this project. But different from the way that it's usually done, for example, with this, a lot of the state and federal grants that we get, where we're given a scope of work, we're even told who we can hire, and the kind of work that we can do, the Board of Supervisors chose to tell the community to develop their own scope of work. Basically said, here's the money, we know what the problem is, tell us what you're going to do to solve it. And we have seen a huge reduction in a lot of the disparities that we were targeting. And so, that's what we mean by being able to shift the power where we're actually sharing the decision-making with the affected community, and working shoulder to shoulder with them in solving the issues. So, we were able to develop a health and racial equity unit, and a lot of that was, part of that was because of the Declaration of Racism as a public health crisis that was declared by the Board of Supervisors, and also, we got funding from CDC to be able to do this. I'm not going to read the mission and vision to you, but I'm very pleased to inform you that right now, we have six staff in that unit, a very diverse, very passionate, very knowledgeable group of people. And they've already been working with other departments. They were instrumental in being able to assist the county in putting on our first health and racial justice, health and racial equity, I'm mixing up the words, health and racial equity summit that we just completed recently. So, very pleased with the work that they're doing. So, talking a little bit about the timeline, I, I'm starting with the COVID-19 pandemic, because that was very pivotal in a lot of ways in what happened during that year, in being able to release a lot of money. And also, actually, the COVID-19 did highlight a lot of disparities that we find in our communities. And then, the next is that was the Declaration of Racism as a public health crisis. And as I mentioned, that really gave us the platform to be able to move ahead with a lot of the initiatives that we're taking, we're working on in public health. One of those was hiring a health equity lead within the COVID response, and this position was really instrumental in helping us to build bridges with the community, to be able to hear from them. And as we were building our response, especially as we moved into the vaccine response, it was really important for us to be able to work with the community. And so, having that individual was very instrumental. In 2021, again, we were focusing on COVID-19. After the allocation of the CARES money, we were able to partner with Sierra Health After the allocation of the CARES money, we were able to partner with Sierra Health Foundation and other CBOs within the community to build the Health Equity Task Force, as well as a SAC collab, which was about 40 or so CBOs that were working together to get information out, to get help out to communities that were hurting. And I'm very pleased to report that as a result of the work with these CBOs, we were actually able to eliminate disparities that we were seeing in vaccine rates in, by zip code. So very appreciative for the support that we got and very appreciative for the partnerships. And again, this was an example of how we work on health inequity and how we eliminate disparities. In 2022, the interdepartmental Health and Racial Equity Group was formed, and our staff are very active in that group. And as I mentioned, also with the formation of the Health and Racial Equity Unit, we were able to have resources that were dedicated to being able to work on these issues. We were also, again, with the funding from the CDC, able to contract with two consultants. OnTrack Program Resources is helping us to develop and implement an employee training plan, and this is, this plan, the aim of this plan is to increase staff knowledge and build capacity to advance health and racial equity through all of the public health programs. And then with the Equity and Wellness Institute, where they're helping us to facilitate an organizational assessment and develop a racial equity strategic action plan, and this will guide our work as we develop partnerships with the community. 2023, we've completed the organizational assessment, and we have, have worked with OnTrack to develop our training series for all of our staff, and we've actually started implementing that, and we're hearing a lot of good feedback from the information. There are several trainings as a part of this, so it's a lot of additional work, but everyone is appreciative that we are putting this effort into being able to provide the information and the resources to our staff. One other thing is that we just recently completed a community health assessment, and we will be presenting that report to you, and as a result of that, we worked with community groups to then develop a community health improvement plan, and we are working with Public Health Advocates in being able to develop an action plan. There are three priorities that were highlighted as a result of the work with the community, and those are mental health, housing insecurity, and food insecurity. And as you notice, all of these are issues or initiatives where we're going to have to work with other departments within the county and also have to work with other stakeholders within the community. So looking forward to being able to present that plan to you as we move forward. Continuation, 2324, we're continuing with our planning. We now, and we will have a Health and Racial Equity Toolkit, as well as the, starting on the Training Evaluation. So for 2324, we're going to basically start implementing the plans that are developed alongside with our consultants. And then lastly, one of the things that we are hoping to start at the beginning of 2024 is to work with other departments within the county to implement what we usually call GARE, which is a Government Alliance for Race and Equity, and be able to apply for membership. GARE is a national network of government working to achieve racial equity and advance opportunities for all, and we're in good company. There are a lot of different cities and counties that are a part of this, so we are able to learn from them as well as learn from the experts, and this will open up a lot of additional tools that we will be able to use. I think this is my last slide, and I just wanted to say again that the Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis was instrumental in allowing us to do the work that we're doing now. And what we're doing in public health is not in isolation. Very appreciative that we have the DEI Cabinet now, and we have a forum where we are able to discuss race and equity projects with other individuals in other departments, and looking forward to being able to continue to work on that. Also, of course, looking forward to being able to work with the DEI chief once that person is selected. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to get the presentation.
We'll hear from, we'll hear from Dr. Quist, but I, thank you, Dr. Kessire, for the, for the presentation, and I, I mean, it's, it's great to hear some of the steps that we're taking, obviously, in the public health arenas where we see these disparities most glaringly, where they matter, you know, the most, and certainly that, that resolution preceded my tenure, but we have been doing some good work, and I appreciate your presentation, and we'll hear from Dr. Quist.
Good afternoon, Board members. Dr. Ryan Quist, I'm the Behavioral Health Director for Sacramento County. And we have another PowerPoint? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. To start off, like to just underscore that cultural competency is an underlying core value of community-based behavioral health throughout the nation, and particularly here in Sacramento, here in Sacramento as well as California, so much so that in 1997, they actually incorporated it into our, our requirements as a part of, as a mental health plan. So we've been working on cultural competency for a long time. This is something that is particularly relevant here in Sacramento County, a very diverse community with seven threshold languages, which I believe might be second only to LA County. So this is a topic that we've really been working a lot on over the years. It's applicable to all of our county providers, it's applicable to all of our contract providers, it takes all of us to really focus on this. We do have an annual report that we develop that talks about both our, how we're meeting our annual cultural competency training requirements, and also we conduct annual surveys regarding the diversity of our workforce through our annual human resource and language proficiency survey. Like I mentioned, we, we have an annual plan that we publish, submit to the Department of Healthcare Services, and that can be found on the link in this slide if you're interested in taking a look at the full, full, full report. The topics that I'm going to focus on right now are going to start off in 2018, when a group of community stakeholders came forward and really strongly encouraged Behavioral Health Division to really develop programming that would specifically focus and target the needs of our African-American, Black, and African descent communities. In response to that advocacy that came forward, the Division formed a Cultural Competence Committee ad hoc work group that would begin to talk about how we could move this work forward. We contracted with a consultant that, at Al James, who then helped us with organizing and holding four community listening sessions to talk about what should such programming look like in order to best meet the needs of this community. We did, based on that feedback, we developed some programming that we, we wanted to implement here in Sacramento County, and we initially issued an RFP for one contract provider to provide all that work. And what we found was that, based on that RFP, we realized that, based on the minimum requirements that were involved with responding to the RFP, that we inadvertently had actually made it so that our Black and African-American owned and operated programs, community-based organizations, were not qualifying for the RFP. So that obviously was inadvertent and not something that we wanted, so we canceled that RFP. So then in 2020, we contracted with Sierra Health Foundation to help us with developing a contracting process that would be open to, available to our Black and African-American owned and operated organizations. And so the Sierra Health Foundation awarded four subcontracts to, for, for, for providers. The providers are Improve Your Tomorrow, OnTrack Program Resources, Roberts Family Development Center, and Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center. Doing this important work, you'll notice that it did come during the pandemic, which was a time when this work was very needed within the community. Moving the, the work forward, we realized that this one program, I mean, this one set of programs alone was not going to be meeting all of the needs, and so we actually worked with California Institute for Behavioral Health Services in order to develop a, a strategy on how we would continue improving, making improvements to our system. And so with CIBHS, we developed a strategy using targeted universalism approach, and CIBHS offered, and we contracted with them to facilitate conversations around this. Targeted universalism is basically where we set universal goals and then identify targeted specific interventions that will help us get closer to those goals. And so in order to do this, we, we developed a steering committee that was made up of both community members as well as our executive leadership within behavioral health to collaboratively work together towards identifying what those targeted interventions should be. As a result of that steering committee, we established African-American, Black, African descent, Behavioral Health, Behavioral Health, Racial Equity Collaborative, and that collaborative has really developed sort of a life of its own, and that's how we're more or less branding the work is in our BREC, Behavioral Health, Racial Equity Collaborative, focusing on making improvements to behavioral health. Working with a number of our community-based organizations that volunteered to be a part of this work, the county developed, as well as each of the community-based organizations that were involved, each developed their own racial equity action plans, which again were developed with specific interventions and strategies for how they planned on making improvements to equity within our programming. A lot of, a lot of it has to do with, with our workforce. We know that the diversity of our workforce, that we do better in behavioral health when the cultural backgrounds of those providing services matches those, the cultural background of those who are receiving services. So one theme you saw throughout a lot of those racial equity action plans was a focus on our workforce. Here in 2023, we continued to, to implement our racial equity action plans and continue to make, continue that work forward. We do include equity as a standing agenda item on all of our behavioral health meetings, including my executive team. This, so it's always part of our conversation. This year, we're also launching a new Behavioral Health, Racial Equity Collaborative in partnership with the Latino, Latinx, and Hispanic communities, where we're looking to meaningfully engage with our communities to understand how we can continue to improve services to promote behavioral health equity for these communities as well. In addition, we've also included this year an incentive as, for all of our contract providers, that it, that they receive funding as long as they participate and complete a self-assessment regarding equity within each one of their organizations. We also have our equity grounded quality improvement coaches that we're working on developing, and the Division has really had a focused, a focus on intentionally outreach and recruiting from our diverse communities in order to help make improvements to the diversity of our staff so that we can more appropriately reflect the same diversity that we see within our communities. I would like to pause and acknowledge one of our leaders, Mary Nakamura, who is leading our, our work for behavioral health in this area. In addition to thanking her for all of her leadership in this area, I regularly remind our entire system that this is not one person's job, this is our entire system's job to continue to promote equity, and so I have to thank our entire system for all their various efforts in continuing to make improvements to, to equity across our entire county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And I guess I have a question, I don't see any other supervisors queued up at this point, a question for either Dr. Kessire or, or Tim or you, is how will we measure or gauge success of our efforts?
I love that question because it is the rubber meets the road. I, I see, at least from a department perspective, success part, as, as Dr. Quist alluded to, our hiring practices. Are we, are we making sure that we're hiring culturally appropriate individuals that understand how to provide service to the communities we're outreach to? When we're looking at communities themselves, are we, are we overcoming disparities in access to care in chronic conditions where we know certain communities, based on zip code, can have poor health outcomes or access to healthy foods? So baseline measuring is critical as we do these interventions to make sure that then we're moving the needle toward actually changing outcomes, health outcomes within our communities. And I think within the community, the CHIP, the Community Health Improvement Plan that Dr. Kessire alluded to, one of the key goals within that is how are we setting objectives and meeting those objectives within those specific areas?
Okay. And ultimately, we, I mean, no, thank you, Tim, I appreciate that, you know, it made me think this morning in the context of the, the discussion about screening for breast cancer, you know, there's something we can, we can go back and, and look by zip code, can we improve that through education, for instance? So I'm just thinking along those lines. I mean, we don't want to go through another public health crisis to see whether the, we've been successful or not in some of these measures we're taking, obviously, so. Okay. Okay, I know we have some public comments, I think four, is that right, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. Someone by my name is here, Flo.
I know it's always confusing when I'm in here and people keep saying Flo, and I'm looking around.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I was just about to say, I didn't check the time before I walked up here, so I wasn't sure how to greet you. Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Dr. Flo Jean-Couffer, and I am the Senior Director of Policy for Public Health Advocates, and it is a pleasure to be before you because my colleagues who will follow me this morning, and I were here a few months ago and actually requested this item, an update on the, the response to declaring racism a public health crisis back in 2020 under Supervisor Serna's leadership, and so we are incredibly grateful for that. We also have with us this morning the petition signed by over 100 community members who are asking for a refrain that you'll hear commonly, which is nothing about us without us. We want to make sure that Black, Indigenous, and other people of color communities are included in the leadership when it comes to addressing racism as a public health crisis, and one of the ways to do that is to be able to codify the voices into the decision-making process. If it's possible, can I, can we see the screen here? So.
Your namesake is in charge of that.
Sorry about that.
Stop your time here.
Okay, so before you, you have a graphic, but actually we have to thank one of our, many of our. of our, many of our staff for helping to put together, but asking the question of, we say this all the time, racism is a public health crisis, and wanted to make sure that we were really clear about what that means. And so it essentially means that starting at birth, we interact with many systems and structures, and racism can show up in all of them. And so we made this as a way to be able to think about all the ways that this racism can be embedded. And it's really important for us to recognize also what the definition of racism is, because so often we hear the refrain, right, when we're having these conversations about like, I don't believe that, you know, my, my colleagues are racist. I don't believe I live in a racist community or a racist country. And certainly I hope that, you know, popular opinions have shifted over time to be more, you know, more respectful of our communities. But racism is also a system. And it means that in a country that was founded on, you know, on the stolen land and the genocide of one group of people and the stolen people to work that land, you know, that we have to recognize that that is a long-lasting impact, especially when we haven't done much to be able to repair the harms. And we've just kind of tried to stop doing as much harm. But we're still doing harm if we don't address those. And so this is a great illustration of the places where that's baked in. And so one of our asks of you this, this morning is just to consider, as you're making decisions, every decision that was brought up this morning impacts, you know, is impacted by racism. From the off-agenda items to the items on the agenda this morning around, around housing and around infrastructure projects, all of those have a component of a racial dynamic, of racial disparities. And so it's our imperative to really consider when we're making decisions how that's baked in. And so next up, I think, is one of my colleagues to continue the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Cofer.
I'm okay. Almost now there. Good afternoon. First off, thank you so much, Doctors Casiri and Quist for great presentations. And I'd also like to congratulate the county, especially the Health and Racial Equity Unit for the Racial Equity Summit last week. I was in attendance, and it's a really awesome step forward, particularly the breakout sessions, got like a deep dive into some of the programs and initiatives that were mentioned this morning, including first five, including the Pay for Health and Racial Equity Collaborative. I know there was also just a breakout I wasn't able to attend, talking about Cultural Broker Program within CPS. So those are all really amazing things and want to appreciate and celebrate those things. I do want to share also on the second page, this really helpful diagram that shows different levels of change. One of the conversations that kept happening at the Racial Equity Summit, I heard Dr. Casiri and Dr. Fidal both mention systemic change, and also Dr. Radhakrishna in the opening, in the opening session. I'm here to submit to you this afternoon that a lot of the initiatives that are being undertaken by the county presently fall into incremental change, responding to the symptoms of this horrible crisis by finding ways to address infant mortality and childhood death, impact the first five years of a child's life. But to get to structural and transformational change, I would submit to you today that that takes partnership with impacted community and specifically resourcing and codifying participation with impacted communities. I don't think it's a huge reach to say that there are lots of programs that the county already has, including, you know, tapping resources like the incubator leads and BCLC, or the, the parents who participate in the Parent Leadership Training Institute, trying to nail all my acronyms here, or, or the providers who participate in the Behavioral Health and Racial Equity Collaborative. Those, that existing pool of community experts could really be a resource to the county for informing long-term policy. And my friend and colleague, Crystal Harding, will talk about more how that might look in practice. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Crystal.
Good afternoon, Crystal.
Good afternoon. Crystal Harding, a proud resident of District Three, peace and love. My family and I have been beneficiaries of social service programs from CalFresh to Medi-Cal, Dentacal, child welfare, free lunch programs, to name a few. And I also have the privilege to serve as a resource family, adoptive parent, a program lead with the Black Child Legacy Incubator at Liberty Towers, a clinical social worker at two hospitals here, and I'm a parent leader and graduate of the Parent Leadership Training Institute program. So I have a very unique and instrumental perspective from both sides. And I want to just first applaud and appreciate the investment that you've already, that have already been noted. Through personal and professional experience, there is most definitely a disconnect between decision-makers and the people directly affected and have to live with the policies that are enacted. Oftentimes, policymakers lack comprehensive insight into the real challenges faced by the people. Now, imagine actual recipients of services being engaged as experts with valuable lived experiences who are the closest to the pain, the issue, or the concerns, and they have the solutions. We are the experts who should be sought after for our specialized knowledge, our skills, and practical contact as consultants. We can guide and advise respective entities and departments to address the needs of the people or communities they are meant to serve. Now, I don't mean a performative check-the-box survey, more so intentional engagement of experts who can assist government, organizations, and businesses make informed decisions, solve complex problems, and ensure that the services provided meet high standards, comply with best practices, and most importantly, incite and inform sustainable policy change. It's crucial for policymakers to adopt transformational, inclusive, and participatory approaches, actively involving communities and individuals who will be affected by the policies and the decision-making process. When policymakers and their staff and communities they serve work closely together, it can lead to transparency, accountability, foster trust and confidence, and thorough assessment of social determinants of health and potential impact on various stakeholders. If you haven't been through something, how can you actually speak to it? Having clear and open communication can convey policy objectives, reasoning, and potential implications to help build understanding and support more effective and sustainable policies that address the needs and concerns of the people while also achieving broader societal goals. Nothing about us without us. So thank you for your leadership, your service, time, and attention. Peace and love.
Thank you.
And then Debbie.
Hey. Is it afternoon yet? When are we going to lunch? Hey, I just wanted to thank everyone for their enthusiasm on this topic. And moving forward into a, a beautiful world where we're all one, I totally support that. Just wanted to say that I have a couple of questions for our community and our county. What is the definition of equity? What is the difference between equal opportunity and equal outcome? Can there be equal opportunity and equal outcome? And can it be fair and impartial? To say that this topic is not a controversy would be a lie. A controversy is caused not by facts, but by theories. Theories can be disputed. So I am very enthusiastic about the fact that I've spent 40 years implementing equal rights and equal opportunity in my business that I owned for 25 years. I have a diverse community that I live in and I interact with every day. But to say that, are we aware that there is an active requirement by the International Monetary Fund that we implement these policies? Are we aware that, did I run out of time? Sorry, microphone. Are we aware that the banking and international banking requires this agenda? So I'd like to go back to the maxims of law. It says, equity will not suffer a wrong without a remedy, but nothing is more unjust than to extend equity too far. Thank you.
That concludes your public comments.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring you back to the board. The comments, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to extend my thanks to the first three speakers who spoke and presented very eloquently, as they always do, on this and other subjects. And couldn't agree more in terms of the message, at least that I've heard loud and clear, which is take advantage of what we have in the community to, to achieve what we all are focused on right now. And, you know, I think we can actually, I think it was actually cited, someone mentioned it, that if you look back at how the RACD and then Black Child Legacy Campaign was stood up and gained traction and now is completely and rightfully and thankfully so, kind of owned by the community. I think that, that is probably the best model we have. Of course, that took several years, but look where we are now. And as Dr. Casiri referenced, look at the outcomes that we're seeing, the fruits of everyone's hard work and dedication. And quite frankly, if it was, if that was attempted just by a county, a local government, I could almost guarantee we wouldn't have the successes that we enjoy today. So again, just want to express my appreciation to, to all the doctors. It was like the parade of doctors this, this morning. So, but I'm very optimistic and just again very heartened to see how much investment everyone's putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with my colleague, Mr. Serna, and also to publicly thank you for bringing this up originally.
Okay, this is a, no, no action necessary for the board. So thank you. And, and this will certainly not be the last time that we hear from you and not the end of the work. Oh, Supervisor Kennedy, another. And thank you all for being here today as well.
Mr. Chair, I chimed in there just because I'm going to have to leave at 10 to 1. I will be here for the afternoon session, but if this next item goes beyond that, I will not be here for the.
Okay. So, well, I'll let Madam Clerk call the next item.
Yes. Item 49 is the Countywide Fireworks Task Force Enforcement After Action Review.
And I know we are running late on the morning session, and I certainly feel the criticism from my vice chair here. Wouldn't happen under his tenure. So, but I, I believe we have a, Mr. Jones, you'll kick this off, and we'll have some presentations, 20 minutes, 20, 25 minutes of presentations, and we'll have, I'm sure, discussion from the board and some public comment as well. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I think you'll be here for the, for the bulk of it anyway. So if you have any questions, you know, obviously you'll chime in.
All right, great. I'll go ahead with the introductions. So I'm Eric Jones, Deputy Count Executive of Public Safety and Justice. And this item was continued from September 12th, as you know. It is a presentation, so it's an update to the Board of Supervisors about the Countywide Illegal Fireworks Task Force. Because it's a presentation, there's no action needed. And the task force leads will provide an update between various statistical information on the recent Fourth of July period, as well as discussing some opportunities for improvement and refining the work that they do as a task force. It's, the task force itself is co-led by Metro Fire and the Sheriff's Office, and then others such as Park Rangers and Code Enforcement are a part of it. And you'll, you will hear from all four of those task force members today. And so with that, I'll introduce Metro Fire Marshal Law.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name's Barbie Law, and I am the Fire Marshal for the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District. Behind me today is Deputy Fire Marshal Amy Nigren. She may be able to help me with some questions that if you have, I can't answer. Amy's our expert. So I'd like to start with an overview of our fire incident statistics for July 1 through 5. This is the heightened enforcement time period that we typically are focused on every year. So first, we'll start with our total call volume. Our total call volume for Metro Fire actually represents all of our dispatches, and that includes responses to our automatic aid partners. And those partners would be the City of Sacramento, Folsom Fire Department, Kasumnus, Galt, Wilton. So that's all of our calls. Those aren't just our calls. So we did have a 9% increase this year over 2022's total call volume, and that would include medical responses, fires, vehicle accidents, hazmats, anything that we respond to. When we look at our jurisdictions specifically and just fire-related responses, we did have a 48.1% increase in overall fire activity from 2022. So we were dispatched to 160 fire incidents this year. I think it's important to point out for the community that when we look at fire statistics, we also need to look at the other factors that play into that. So this Fourth of July holiday was preceded by two days of 100-plus degree weather with lower humidity, and then followed by heavier winds on the Fourth at 10 miles per hour. So there's other factors besides just the volume of calls that comes in when we look at how and why did we have fires. So for our fireworks statistics, this is similar to what we've seen in previous years. The majority of fires that we are seeing related to fireworks, and that would be both safe and sane and illegal fireworks, are grass fires. And the majority of those fires remain less than an acre. So if we were dispatched and encountered smoldering firework debris in a field, that gets counted as a vegetation fire. So that's the largest portion of our fires, followed by dumpsters and trash fires. Those start to come in later in the evening when people are done utilizing their fireworks for the evening. We are continuing to see problems with improper disposal of fireworks. And so we'll see an increase for a couple of hours in trash and dumpster fires. This year, over to the left-hand side of the column, you'll see our building fires. We did have one residential structure fire this year during the Fourth of July enforcement period. That was related to improper disposal of legal safe and sane fireworks in a trash can on the side of a home. That trash can caught fire and then extended to the home. However, there were no injuries related with that fire. And then the other structure fires that you see are outbuildings that had some minor damage. So those are the type of fires that we're seeing related to fireworks. And then we'll come here to our statistics on the number of fires that we are able to determine were related to fireworks in some capacity. So although this year was busy, 2021 was the peak of our fireworks-related fires in the county. So you'll see over on the, on the right-hand side of the chart there, where we're looking at the total number of fires, in 2021, we had 56 fires that we were able to show were related to fireworks. That dropped to 30 last year in 2022, which was great. But we did have an increase again this year up to 48 fires. And then of note, if you look at the total percentage of our call volume that's related to fireworks, we can see that this is actually a low percentage of all the calls that we respond to throughout the county during that holiday period. And the one number that we would like to bring to your attention is that over the last three years, we are seeing every year an increase in fires related to legal safe and sane fireworks. So that has been both sparks generated too close to dry vegetation and improper disposal of those products. So obviously, that is a concern. With our illegal fireworks, similar to the total calls, we were at our height in 2023, great significant drop in 2022, and then an increase with that activity this year, which is concerning to us. Finally, undetermined fires. Just a note on undetermined, it's not the undetermined the cause of the fire. It was we were unable to determine the type of firework that was involved. So investigators or inspectors were able to locate fireworks debris in the area of origin of the fire, but there was too much destruction to be able to determine what type of device was involved in that ignition source.
And Marshal Law, before you go to the next one, next slide, just so I'm clear how this relates to the earlier slide about your, with your total statistics. So it's 48 out of, 48 out of 160 total fires, correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is correct. So 30% of the fires this year were related to some type of fireworks.
Activity, okay.
But that was for those. But that was for those July 1 to July 5. We're looking at a compressed slice of data. Injuries, we talked about that prior to the holiday, that our concern for injuries. This year, we actually did see a 66% increase in injuries over the previous two years, which is a concern. During the 4th of July holiday, we did have 10 people that utilized the 911 system for fireworks-related injuries. The majority of those were related to illegal fireworks, and those consisted of blast injuries from devices exploding in people's hands with some pretty significant injuries. However, we did also have a report of a safe and sane firework that also misfired, and a person lost their finger in that incident. And then the others, we were, again, unable to determine if the firework was legal or illegal because of the damage to the device and/or the person not being able or willing to speak to us about the source of the fireworks and what they were using before that injury occurred. When we look at our severity of injury by firework type, we have our three works, three years' worth of data here. I'm happy to report that we had no fatalities, no fatalities this year related to fireworks at all, so that is great. The majority of the injuries, again, were due to illegal fireworks when we look at our severe injuries. In the moderate category, that would include burns and blast injuries and things, kind of evenly distributed across the type of fireworks, so both are capable of causing burns and injuries. And the only fire fatality that we have had in our community in the last three years was an improper disposal of safe and sane fireworks in a garbage can in a garage that led to total destruction of the house, and we had a fatality involved in that incident. When we look at our annual fireworks date trends, this basically is showing you kind of the patterns of when our calls start coming in, and it's consistent every year. So, we get an incident or two before Memorial Day, and then it really ticks up when we see the fireworks booths open for sale. And that continues all the way through the 4th of July, and then our fire activity drops off drastically when we're talking about fire activity related to fireworks. So, we do see some coordination between booths being open and closed. That also, these same trend lines carry over into the complaints that we receive from the community. And when we start to see an uptick in complaints about fireworks use, I do have some information that is not in your slide on the number of complaints that we received this year. So, overall, we received a total of 919 complaints. Many of those were actually for other jurisdictions. So, we did forward 129 complaints over to the Sacramento Fire Department. We had 11 that were actually for the Kasumnus Fire Protection District, four complaints that were in Folsom, two for the City of Rancho Cordova, two for the City of Roseville, and one for Wilton. So, that left us with 600-plus complaints that we were dealing with that came in from May. The last complaint we've received actually was in August of this year, August 18th. The vast majority of those complaints actually came in on July 4th, over about a six-hour, over about a six-hour period.
Can you send that information to us on the complaints, if you don't mind?
Yes, I can.
Supervisor Curna.
Thank you. So, I want to understand what a complaint is. Is it complaint in real time? Is it a 911 call to, to the dispatcher that then routes it to fire?
So, we have a variety of ways that complaints come in, and I have those statistics for you as well. So, we at Metro Fire had two referrals from 311. So, your community can contact 311, and then they will forward that concern on to the appropriate department. We did have four emails from community members directly into our division that were handled by staff. We fielded nine phone calls to our front desk. And then we received 775 complaints through the Report Fireworks@sat county.net. Those emails are, come directly to us in the background in addition to your county staff. We had 127 complaints that were, I'm not sure how we got them, if they came through the Report Fireworks, but they were initiated on the Nail 'Em app. We did have challenges with those complaints, specifically people not providing contact information or actionable location. So, the complaint was so broad, we're not even sure where to go to put in the information, and quite a few people were reporting their own address. And we did receive complaints from people who received warning letters when they were the person that actually initiated the complaint, which is why we greatly prefer for people to utilize the streamlined system that we have now, which is to utilize that Report Fireworks@sat county.net and your non-emergency lines for law enforcement.
Do you have data on, like, the nature of the complaints?
Yes.
So, aerial versus explosive, you know, or that they saw something at some distance? I mean.
I can provide that to you. We actually saved and catalogued every complaint that came in. If it came in, if they called us, we put a summary statement in there of what the complaint was. Some of them, you know, it ranged from a specific address and location and to, you know, I heard a loud bang with no location and really no information for us to go off of. I will say that for us at Metro Fire, all of those emails, I have multiple staff members that see them, but I personally, myself, contacted everyone that had provided either a phone number. If they reported via email and their email was there, I was able to get ahold of them and engage in conversation and try to elicit more information, as well to try and filter through some of the complaints that came in where people reported their own address so that we could avoid them getting a warning letter and trying to get the correct information. So, I spoke to a lot of people between Memorial Day. Because of the volume of complaints that came in on the 4th, it took me about a week of reaching out to people after the holiday to make sure that we had still had that contact with every community member that wanted to talk to us.
Thank you.
So, I know we've had questions in the past about staffing, and so I think it would be helpful, first of all, to understand, at least for Metro Fire, how our regular staffing works, and then what enhanced staffing actually means. So, on a regular basis, our fire inspectors are assigned to work Monday through Friday. They work day shifts. They're staggered throughout the day, so we have coverage from about 6:00 in the morning up till 5:30 in the evening. Those inspectors are focused on code enforcement and supporting plan reviews, inspections, and our business community. On the other side, we have our arson investigations unit. That is staffed by an on-duty 24/7 arson investigator, and that on-duty investigator is supported by a supervisor who works 10-hour days and is on a day shift. So, what happens for us during this heightened enforcement period is it's all hands on deck based on a couple of factors. When during the week is the holiday occurring? When do we have public displays that we have to have inspectors at? We're required to be at those locations under the fire code for the duration of an event. And then how much activity are we seeing in complaints to determine how many people can we get on duty and in, and then assign to different areas to bolster what's needed in the location? So, what that looked like for us this year, we had two public displays on July 1st, and so we brought in myself, the deputy fire marshal, we had an additional fire investigator, and then four fire inspectors. The first was not a busy day for us. Once the public displays had concluded, I was able to release some staff earlier. I stayed in monitoring the complaints that were coming in as they came in, and I think I went home at about 1:00. We were able to release the rest of staff a little bit earlier than that. Similar, on July 2nd, we had no public displays, so we didn't have as much of a need for additional people, but we did have teams out in each of our battalions to help support our arson investigators if needed. Again, they were not needed and went home a little bit early. The third, we had three public displays. So, you'll see we had more personnel there related to the public displays, and we started bringing in two supervising inspectors. And one of those supervising inspectors was utilized to strictly monitor incoming complaints and relay that information to our patrolling units in the field to get out to hotspot areas. And then July 4th was obviously our maximum enforcement day. Everybody was on duty until the calls started to slow down, which was around 1:00 in the morning. I remained in at work assisting the rest of our chief officers. So, this is not just the extent of enhanced staffing for Metro Fire when it comes to this holiday. On the 3rd and 4th, we also staff additional chief officers for our operational needs as we do see heightened fire activity, as well as we upstaff our, some brush rigs. So, as we talked about before, the majority of fire activity we do see during this holiday is vegetation fires. So, we upstaff firefighters on those units so that we can keep our suppression engines available for structure fires if they come in. And then, as a reminder, all of our fire inspectors have origin and cause investigation training, so they have arson investigation certifications. The main difference between our fire inspectors and an arson investigator is that the fire inspectors are not peace officers. They do not have peace officer authorities, and they are not armed personnel, however they are trained in arson investigation. Do you have any questions on our heightened staffing plan? Okay. So, the primary objectives for our personnel, for the fire department, when we're looking at our enhanced staffing, primary objective is emergency response. We are there to support our fire investigators for origin and cause determination and investigations. We're also out there for code enforcement. As we talked about before, we're required to be at public displays until they, an hour after they conclude, to make sure that there are no challenges and that shoot goes off in a safe and legal manner. And then we are utilized for after-the-fire follow-up. And this is on any regular day. We always have an on-call 24/7 fire inspector as well. So, whenever we've had a fire, we also have to have some code enforcement things that happened in the background after that fire to make sure that systems are restored, that businesses can, you know, get back into services as early as possible. And that requires us to go work with the suppression crews and the investigation team while they're there. After that, we're assisting our law enforcement partners with any needs that they may have if they come across a fire and request us. And then we utilized the complaint system that was coming in to identify hotspots and try and have inspectors roll through areas as a deterrent, but also community outreach. Whenever it was safe for us to do so, we would stop and actually speak with people if we saw unsafe actions happening before we actually had a fire. So, I think that was successful, but I will say we definitely got into some areas and situations where our inspectors did not feel safe and may not have been able to make that one-on-one connection just due to the volume of people at a block party, those type of issues. So, outcomes from our activities this year. During the 1st to the 5th, we were able to refer five incidents to, over to Barry and his team in code enforcement for your social host violation. We did work with the ATF this year on a sting operation. I'm not at liberty to provide a ton of details about that. We did have 23 fire incident responses, so those are incidents that actually required someone with that heightened arson investigation skill set level. July 3rd, our teams down in the south area confiscated 30 to 40 pounds of illegal fireworks, and then those are turned over to EOD for storage and proper disposal with reporting to the Office of the State Fire Marshal. July 4th, we had the largest single haul in the region of illegal fireworks. Deputy Fire Marshal Nyren was working with one of our inspectors, Krista Ane, and one of our supervisors was out in the field as well. And they actually rolled into a neighborhood in Fair Oaks at Lethem and Groff. If you're not familiar with the area, it's about one block south of Phoenix Park in the Mississippi Bar area. So, this location backed up directly onto the American River Parkway. And what you see here is what they found. Multiple families in the neighborhood set up and ready to shoot all of that up off this evening. Amy called me pretty concerned, like, oh my God, we can't leave here, what do we do? And I said, we need to call our partners at EOD. I got out there on the way. There was so much product out there, we actually had to have our logistics manager come in from Elk Grove off-duty with a box truck from our logistics center to transport all of this over to the EOD. I will tell you, this is an affluent neighborhood, and I think this speaks to the normalization of where our culture is with how they're treating fireworks, despite all of the educational and all of the materials that we have been putting out in the community. This was really distressing. So, although that's a huge amount of fireworks, it's a drop in the bucket of what we were seeing out on the street.
Where did they get these?
The individual that actually had the truck said that he had driven, the neighborhood had pooled money, and you had someone that used their pool business van and drove to, I think they stopped in one location in Nevada and said, we can get it cheaper somewhere else, drove to another location and drove his pool supply van home with this. Perump is where he said he got it. So, so just to discuss some of the challenges that we saw this year, one of the things, the social host ordinance, what we found, despite our best efforts, is that even with the information of where neighbors are reporting problems, it is very difficult to pinpoint the source of the fireworks when it's going off. That crowds are assembled in courts and in the middle of the road, so it's difficult to identify who it actually is, who's got the product, and then what's the address that that social host violation would go to. That boom and crackle of fireworks happens in seconds, and it's gone. And it may be very easy to identify when you are sitting in your home stationary. It is not an easy thing when you're out in a vehicle in patrol in the dark, trying to weave through crowds, keeping your eyes on the road so you're not hitting people. That count, the sound carries quite a distance. Catching someone in the act, we found, was not really an easy task. Like, you literally had to just be in the right place at the right time and have somebody be foolish enough to set it off right in front of you. Night conditions, we found, to support the social host violations, it's helpful to have video and photos. However, we found the night conditions and shooting into bright fireworks does not enhance the quality of photos and that evidence. We did see widespread instances of people gathering at schools and community parks to launch fireworks. Obviously, now you don't know who is the person responsible for a social host violation, and that was widespread. We did receive quite a few complaints, which we forwarded on to the park districts to let them know that there was activity going on in their, in their locations and jurisdictions. And to highlight some of the challenges that we had, especially when our bottom point there about just indifference to authority and the problems for our personnel safety, I just wanted to read you a brief narrative from an experience that Engine and Truck 26 had up in Antelope on Palmerson. And so this says, "Engine and 26 arrived on scene to find a large crowd of people igniting legal and illegal fireworks. Security, private security was already on scene, stated the individuals were lighting fireworks and throwing them at them in the parking lot. They requested the sheriff's department to respond. The people on scene also lit fireworks which exploded near and around our companies and actually lobbed one underneath our fire truck. Security personnel also stated that they saw a fire somewhere on the school campus. We checked the school campus and were not able to find any signs of fire. No one was injured in this incident. When the sheriff's department arrived, they subsequently were able to disperse the crowd and get them to leave the area. Engine 26 found a pile of fireworks debris trash on fire next door in a parking lot and put that out." But I think this speaks to the level of just apathy in the community right now and disrespect for authority and each other as people and neighbors and community members. And it's something that we all are working on desperately to fix, but I don't know that there are easy answers to this. Lastly, we just had personnel safety, which we touched on. And as a reminder, our fire inspectors, that was the majority of the staffing that we have on the street, and same with our firefighters. We're not peace officers, we're not armed, and we're not going to put ourselves in situations in large unruly gatherings of intoxicated people, which is what we experienced. And this is just one example of what we experienced responding to calls with people throwing fireworks at our responders and our vehicles. And I want to bring to you. And I want to bring to your attention this picture, which appeared in the Modesto B, actually. We are seeing a lot of problems, and I was not aware this was an issue until I was out on the street driving around. People do not understand how to properly use their safe and sane fireworks. Taking it and putting it on a ladder in the middle of the road takes a safe and sane product and turns it into something very unsafe for anybody driving down the road, the people sitting underneath, you can see those ember showers. And this is a widespread need, so occurrence that we saw. So next year, we're going to have to be doing some more education on really how to appropriately use your safe and sane fireworks, because that's not it. And I can turn it over to Sergeant Matranga.
Before you turn it over, sorry. And I know, you know, Metro Fire has the largest role here, and I don't want to prolong the presentation. And I know, right now, this is not an issue that a lot of us are hearing about from our constituents, but I can tell you that, you know, the days right after the 4th of July, it was probably in the four digits, the complaints that we were getting from people in District 3. I mean, I hadn't seen, I think, such vitriol or such rage from people, and with respect to anything, whether we're talking homelessness or roads or anything, than what I saw in those few days after the 4th of July. And I think you articulated it very well, the impact it's having on people. And then maybe it's a short period of time, but a really profound impact on them in their neighborhoods, not just the danger, but just the quality of life, and then the impact on animals in our, you know, in our community as well. I'm curious, with respect to the complaints that you talked about and learned a little more with Supervisor Serna, were you able to, when you dug into some of those complaints that you received, were you able to determine how many of those were actually complaints about what turns out to be legal fireworks, whether that's a display or safe and sane fireworks from a booth? Any sense of that?
We did have a few complaints we were able to determine, particularly in Citrus Heights, around when they had their public display. Over in the park, we did get complaints at the same time. People did not understand, didn't understand that. Otherwise, it's a little bit challenging, I would say. Anytime, obviously, somebody says they saw something shooting in the air, we already know that that's, that that's an illegal firework. I did talk to a fair number of people. I did not, next year, we could actually start tracking, did people specifically make comments to us about how they would like to see all fireworks not utilized in the county, as several other major metropolitan areas have done. But that's a discussion for you as a board, I think.
And I think, I mean, you've certainly revealed where you are on that topic, and I'm certainly not at that point, but I think we would be remiss if we don't have a discussion about the impact that legal fireworks have on this and the displays have on this. I mean, now, Metro Fire, you're the ones, I mean, obviously, you're the primary regulatory body over the booths, right?
Yes.
In the neighborhoods. And I think I asked this question before. Is there any upper limit on the number of safe and sane fireworks booths that people can have in the county?
No.
And, you know, I live in the same house that I grew up in, and I can, it is, it's almost dystopian what you see on the 4th of July and how much bigger it's gotten. And it occurs to me, over the course of my lifetime, there would, there used to be, you know, the booths, they'd be a little more spread out, there were less of them, they were always there. There were some professional displays, but it is so, so much bigger. I mean, everything's about more, bigger, and better in terms of the legal fireworks and the displays. And we're dealing with a finite amount of space, and we have a heck of a lot more legal fireworks and displays in that finite amount of space. So I guess, is there any, do you have any, can you quantify that? Can you quantify how much more legal fireworks, both displays and, you know, safe and sane fireworks, are being used in Sacramento County, unincorporated Sacramento County now compared to, say, 20 years ago?
We'd have to go back and pull some of that data. I can tell you, from a fireworks booth standpoint, I was looking at the numbers recently, back to about 2015. So at the height that I've seen in our numbers, I think it was 176 booths, maybe back in 2015 and 16. So the number of booths has dropped off this year. Was it 144, 154?
I would say, I started with Metro Fire in 2001, and back then, we had probably over 200 booths at that time, and this year, I think we had 154.
Yeah, I think it was 154.
So you can see the drop there. And then our public displays have dropped considerably. We used to have Sunrise Mall, we used to have Cal Expo, which was not in our jurisdiction, but it was a larger display. We had a lot more public displays back then than we do now.
And then in terms, okay, so that's interesting, because that obviously doesn't square with what I see. But I don't think I'm imagining it, that there's more fireworks out there, that I'm hearing a lot more in my community.
Not imagining it.
So notwithstanding the decrease in the number of booths, can you quantify the amount of product that's out there, I guess? Is that possible?
I think it's difficult to quantify, sir, because we're not able to, we showed you the example of what we rolled into in an affluent residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's obvious, we can all see it as we watch the news or we drive around that evening trying to, you know, keep our community safe, that there was an increase in activity. So perhaps, you know, I know we have one of our partners from the fireworks industry here today. I understand he's going to speak. Maybe he'd be able to quantify how much product is actually being sold in those states where it's legal there, but not legal here.
Okay. Well, I'll go Supervisor Kennedy and then Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I was actually going to say, I bet you Mr. Revell could have some answers to those questions. Those numbers that you gave as far as the number of booths, that's just in Metro Fire's area?
That was just in Metro Fire's jurisdiction. That's, that's all we have the authority to track.
Okay.
And actually permit.
Because I will tell you that, you know, my experience is the same as the chair's as far as this year, but I live in the city of Sacramento and represent about half, roughly half, the city of Sacramento. And it was worse this year than I've ever seen in my life. Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Sergeant Matranga.
Well, Supervisor Serna first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, I would concur with my colleagues about the nature of this year's fireworks usage. It's, especially when you see some of those aerial shots that the local news stations will take, you know, kind of at the height of the activity around, I'm going to guess, around 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. It looks like a war zone. I mean, it looks like there's mortars going off, you know, every second. Let me, I have a question for counsel. You mentioned that the 2,000 fireworks that were confiscated came from Nevada?
That is what the person that had the truck relayed to the sheriff's department.
So when someone goes from a state like California that outlaws the sale of aerial fireworks, explosive fireworks, and they cross a state line to go purchase it, is there any violation of, like, interstate commerce that actually constitutes a felony? Do we know?
I'd have to look into that question, but I would assume that it would be a state crime, because they're bringing it into the state of California. And I think, and the chief can correct me, they most likely would be prosecuted by the local district attorney in the state. I recall last year or the year before, us writing a letter to the Attorney General's office asking for further regulation of the fireworks industries. I don't think it went anywhere, but I do know that we sent a letter a couple of years ago asking for that.
So, I mean, it's considered, I assume it's considered contraband, right? So I know that, I'm not interning, that's why I'm turning to you, that if you, but if there is commerce that's committed, money for contraband between states and the transportation of contraband across state borders, I thought that was somehow, that constitutes a, or can constitute a felony.
It may, but again, you know, I'm not a criminal lawyer, as you all know. I could certainly look into that and answer your question more fully, but.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's not, in terms of the education, the messaging, if there are circumstances where we can say truthfully, you know, "Don't do it, it's a felony." You know, if I'm, you know, Joe Public that wants to shoot off illegal fireworks, maybe that gives me some pause that didn't give, you know, that I didn't get consideration to last year when I went off and bought 2,000 pounds of fireworks.
Right. That's something that we should, I think, look into before the next 4th of July holiday, and I'm happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Through the chair, if I may add something. Also, there are some federal violations, depending, there are federal violations, and that's often why ATF is involved and are on a variety of enforcement task forces in the area as well.
Thank you, Marshal Law. Who's next?
I'll be back here just when we have our summary of things that we can do better next year.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Michael Matranga. I'm sergeant with the sheriff's office, and I'm going to briefly go over the sheriff's office's fireworks response for the 4th of July holiday this year. The main target area this year was along Main Street in Orangeville, specifically between Madison Avenue and Central Avenue. This location was selected due to prior incidents in previous years, which included multiple large-scale illegal fireworks displays, in addition to unauthorized street blockades for those displays. The sheriff's office was part of a collaborative response effort that consisted of 11 problem-oriented policing officers from the sheriff's office, seven California Highway Patrol officers, and one sheriff's office drone operator with a drone unit. They provided a high-impact and high-visibility response to the Orangeville area along Main Street, specifically. They conducted an apartment complex evacuation due to a firework-related fire, and they responded to an unrelated assault with a deadly weapon call for service, where they ultimately arrested the suspect. Additionally, they responded to an outside agency assist for an additional illegal firework display that resulted in a significant firework-related injury. Also, as I mentioned previously, the sheriff's office had two explosive ordinance detailed techs working with SAC Metro, and as we just saw, there was an excess of 2,000 pounds of illegal fireworks seized from that one event. On the screen are two, what we would call a hotspot map, comparing July 1st through July 5th of 2022 and 2023 for fireworks disturbance calls for the sheriff's office. Something kind of to note, the sheriff's office communication center oftentimes will combine duplicated or repeated calls to the center in an effort to not clog up the computer system. So with that being said, the, we actually saw a reduction in areas in 2023. 161 total unique fireworks disturbance events compared to 272 for 2022. Specifically in District 3, which is the Orangeville area, we saw a reduction almost in half, where that team I previously mentioned was working.
So in other words, that, and that's District 3, Sheriff District 3, not District 4.
Sheriff District, absolutely, yes.
So in other words, though, that deployment, those efforts made a difference, in your opinion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I don't see any other questions from colleagues. You know, and I know at the end, everybody will come together to come up with some suggestions for next year or different steps that can be taken, or should I, can I ask Sergeant those questions now?
Yes, Sergeant. Just opportunities, we'll be reexamining.
At the end, okay.
Actually, I can cover that real quick. I'll be meeting with this group just to continue to discuss, you know, a variety of recommendations and possible opportunities to enhance next year's task force.
Okay. Yeah, and that's something I'm very interested in, certainly. And I've had discussion with the sheriff and the undersheriff about that very thing, about, you know, maybe some interdiction resources leading up to the 4th to identify some of these large caches of illegal fireworks and, you know, hopefully expose people to a lot of public humiliation in addition to, you know, the felony fines and possible jail time for it. But I guess we can have that discussion more at the end. Okay. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
I mean, as Barry's coming up here, you know, Barbie, your statement or your characterization of the normalization of this, I mean, I think that is absolutely what we're seeing. I mean, people are not, they're not afraid of the consequences at all. So, hi Barry.
Good afternoon, Chairman Desmond, and fellow board members. I'm Barry Chamberlain, Chief of Code Enforcement for Sacramento County. We'll start out with the fact that we issued 11 host liability citations, and eight of them have been confirmed. From 6:30 advisories that were sent prior to 6:30 2023, which I stopped at 3:00 PM on 6:30 because we went on a weekend, and I didn't feel like the constituents were going to get the letter in time, I sent out 636 advisory letters. There were 754 complaints received from 6:30, 6:30 2023 at 3:00 PM till the end of 7/4 2023. There were 65 more complaints on 7/5, 54 complaints from the 6th to the 9th of July, 34 complaints from July 10th to 7/31, and three complaints in August. During the process of getting a handle on this, I found an old email that was also being sent to reportfireworks@saccounty.gov. It was an old email that was at some point used by the sheriff's department. I work with the sheriff's department, they've gotten rid of it, so it no longer exists. And then we put out, obviously, our outreach that we put out with the advisory letter states to use, reportfireworks@saccounty.gov. So that, there were 778 complaints to that email. And that doesn't mean that there wasn't duplicates, because there was plenty of duplicates throughout the whole system. So the 636 complaints are confirmed and one complaint specifically for the property. I did not track repeat complaints for the same property. We sent out the advisory based on the complaints that we got. So that means between, I sent advisories from Christmas of 2022 through New Year's of 2023, so that included 636 for a grand total of, from before, from the end of 2022 to the end of July, 1,540 complaints received. So anyway, a couple, a couple things I want to talk about. One being that I did, I ultimately sent a lot of letters to parks and schools, because there was a number of complaints about parks and schools. Basically, I got response from all the schools and all the parks saying that they really weren't aware, and I think that we'll continue to do that. It was good outreach, because they were willing to say, "Hey, I didn't even realize this was going on." And I told them, "Well, you need to, you need to consider this, and maybe you need to have staff there to see what's going on and make sure that this kind of thing's not going on." Also, the complaints that I received after 6:30, I'm planning on sending letters as we approach New Year's Eve to these folks, all of the folks that we got complaints for. I also have all the complaints that we've received since 2022, so I also have a file where I can see the repeat offenders. That'll come into play also if we're getting another complaint about the same address. I think that that's it. Is there any questions?
Yes, Supervisor, you.
Thank you, Chair. Barry, I know that it's going to come up during public comment of enforcing our social host ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Through administrative fines. Would that be something your department would be comfortable handling?
Well, we issued 11, and we confirmed eight. The problem is, I have to defend that. So if they appeal the violation, then I have to have, that's why we use the sheriff and we use fire, they're used to doing stuff like that. And it works out better, because I can defend it. And also, the research that we did prior to issuing the citations, what we felt we could actually do something with. So that's problematic, I mean, it's problematic, because obviously, we're not getting a whole lot of looks. We're getting some, but the fact remains that any appeal goes to a hearing officer, and we have to defend that. And if we don't have solid information, they're gonna, they're gonna throw it back at us. They're not gonna, we're not gonna get what we need from it.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, to dovetail off of Supervisor Hume's question, though.
Yeah, to dovetail off of Supervisor Hume's question, though, do we, do we have the participation at all of some of our, or all of our community prosecutors? They deal with quality-of-life issues on our behalf all the time. When I say ours, I mean the five districts. This is clearly a quality-of-life issue, so I'm just wondering, is there any added value of having community prosecutors, at least for the one day of the Independence Day, deploy with code?
There's a severe safety issue with code going out in these areas, of whether a community prosecutor would be able to go out there or not is another question in itself. My community prosecutor was involved in everything we did. She reviewed everything we received as evidence. When we determined a list of ones that we thought that we'd be able to defend, she went through and read through them and determined what she thought we could sell and what we couldn't.
But that's, and that's after, they didn't go out in the field, right?
What's that?
They did not go out in the field?
No.
I'm just, I'm just kind of brainstorming, you know, wondering out loud here. I mean, what if we had roving teams of, you know, sworn personnel, maybe an arson investigator, and a community prosecutor? Would that make any difference? Because then we have kind of, you know, at least from my layman's perspective of the situation, you have someone that can enforce the law, someone that can help prosecute the offense by way of actually seeing for themselves, you know, whatever it is that is taking place. But it just seems to me like our biggest challenge is this whole gotta catch them in the act bit, and it seems like we need more eyes out there, and I just, you know, I just wonder whether or not that's something we ought to bring up with the DA's office. Thank you.
Are the community, is the DA's office involved in all of these discussions?
No. I can.
Okay.
Bring the district attorney's office into the conversations on what enhanced role they may be able to provide.
Because so much of what we're talking about is an evidentiary, evidentiary issues, right? To support either administrative fine or criminal prosecution, yeah. So that, certainly, that's a request I have. I mean, I think they should, should be involved in it. So let me, Barry, before you go, so eight were confirmed. That means you think you have appropriate evidence to take what action?
They pass, well, then they're charged $1,000, and then it goes to collection, it goes to DRNR.
Okay. And we can, that thousand, if they don't pay the $1,000, you can't lien the property for that, can't we, correct?
No, we can't.
And that's just, that's a first offense? What's a second, is there a second offense? Is it a scale? Just remind me, I haven't looked at it.
That's, I think it's, it's a 2,500, yes.
It goes, it goes up from there.
Why can't we lien the property?
Because we can't lien the admin penalties.
So what's the value of having an admin penalty?
Asking the wrong person.
What's, has anyone got an answer?
It goes to collection.
Okay, but I'm a, you know, I'm an avid illegal fireworks user, and I just want to give the finger to the county, there's no recourse on our, on our part to, to get that, to force the payment. That's what a lien is.
Yeah, unless they, unless they try to get a permit to do something at their property, right? The county really doesn't, can't do much.
Well, DRNR, DRNR has collection, can do collection. That's who we use to do it. DRNR is.
So it basically goes to a collection agency.
So it affects their credit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do want to point out, one of the things that we heard from some of the community is that when they buy the illegal fireworks, they're pulling their money together knowing there's a $1,000 fine, so they're already planning for it. So it's really not, it's not a deterrent for them because they're already planning for it ahead of time. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, I would love to know what the DA's office would think about that situation, whether it's one $1,000 fine for the whole group, or is it one $1,000 fine for everyone that contributed? Because that's, that's a different proposition.
You know, what do we need in terms of penalties and an ordinance to really make it a legitimate deterrent? That's very good information that you just gave us, and they're kind of laughing at our efforts, is what I'm, okay.
Well, and I mean, if you drive, if you go out and drive around on the Third and the Fourth, it's a war zone.
Oh, I know it.
You can't get down half the streets, and I mean, I'm not sure Sheriff is interested in going down some of the streets because it's ugly out there. And I was in the South area, so I was in Kennedy's area, just kind of taking a look, and it's not, it's craziness. Not that that does, not that that, that just shows how big the problem is, that's all.
The genie's out of the bottle, I guess. Okay, thanks, Barry. Hello, Liz.
Hi, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. I am your bright point in this presentation. We did not issue any citations for fireworks. We did not have any firework-related fires in our Parks Department or in the American River Parkway in that period of time. We did put out these signs in all of our park areas, and that might have helped curtail some behavior. We had one incident the week of July 9th, where juveniles did set a fire with fireworks. We caught them, and we turned that over to fire investigators. So, but anecdotally, our other park departments, districts are very much affected.
Senator Jim.
Judging by that sign, Chair, apparently $10,000 is the magic number.
Yes, a lot of zeros on that sign.
Yeah, it's a $10,000 fine if it's the social ordinance related to the American River Parkway.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to wrap it up with some of our suggestions for 2024. So we've already discussed as a group with Barry and his team that basically everyone that's had advisory letters in 2023 so far this year, and he has the list from 2022 as well, will be receiving letters in advance of New Year's Eve. Although I know some entities, law enforcement specifically sees a spike in calls and complaints around New Year's specifically. For the rest of the partners in the regional task force, the fire service specifically, we do not see an increase, we don't experience, we don't get complaints and we're not having fires. So for us, our resources that are already dedicated normally to that, to that holiday are sufficient to handle what we're seeing. But the letters will go out in advance of New Year's Eve, and then we're looking at sending out those warning letters earlier in 2024 for everything that's come up in the last couple of years as complaints. Those letters started going out, I believe, the first week in May, Barry? So we will be discussing actually implementing that process earlier to remind people of the penalties. For us, as Metro Fire specifically, we heard loud and clear from our inspectors the safety issues and the compromised positions they were put into out there. So we're going to be looking at some more effective partnering with law enforcement, rather that, if that looks like responding in tandem, or having an inspector paired up with an actual peace officer to enhance that safety for us to be able to make some interventions. I don't think Sergeant Matranga covered it in his presentation, but I do know you guys mentioned that you had utilized drones in that area by Main Avenue and that that was successful. So that is something that the sheriff's office is going to be exploring enhancing, my hope, but no commitment from Metro Fire, is that we may be able to utilize our drones as well. Our program was on hiatus, but I recently heard that we are looking at revamping that program, so we may have some opportunities to partner with the sheriff's office to improve our capability, which also not having to be so close into these neighborhoods to get those pictures that support evidence and criminal or civil liabilities would be, I think, a big benefit. We have talked about before legislative efforts and advocacy. I am pleased to say that AB 1403 was signed by the governor recently, so hopefully we can see some benefit from that. But I do think there's additional work that needs to be done, and perhaps penalties for vendors that knowingly sell products out of state without checking where these residents live, to know that they're not selling to a California resident.
What does that bill do again?
It's, it provides funding. Amy, can you give me an assist on that?
It's not an increase in fines or penalties or anything, it's for additional funding for interdiction or something.
This was looking at reporting data to the state to quantify the problem, funding for enforcement actions. I know that Dennis is our resident expert, so he could probably cover that for you. Host liability, I, we think there would be value, obviously, I think something worked well on the American River Parkway, and we had the sign with that $10,000 fine. Knowing the number of problems that we had fireworks at, or, excuse me, at schools and community parks, I think we need to look at having additional protection there. So those fines need to be enhanced for those properties as well, and working with the schools and parks to get messaging out like they were able to do along the American River Parkway may be very beneficial. We talked about this briefly, but we need to do some more work on our community messaging in regards to what safe use of safe and sane fireworks really looks like, because it's not on ladders in the middle of the street. So we obviously have some community education efforts and more fine-tuning of our messaging next year. Starting early was beneficial for us, but probably need to tie that into when the letters are going to go out and even earlier start talking about this, and rolling out some education programs into schools and other locations. And then finally, as the regional group, we did have some discussion and think there may be value in narrowing the window of sales because we do see that pattern of our complaints and fire incidents and everything is a trend line that really coincides with when our booths open and when they close. There's a little bit of inconsistency across the county and various agencies in when they stop that sales window, but we do see benefit at least in stopping on July 4th because we don't want to see people using them after July 4th.
What's the window right now?
June 28th to July 4th. I think noon on June 28th to 10:00 PM on July 5th. So we would see definitely value in stopping at 10:00 PM on July 4th. And just some items for the board to discuss. I know there's a lot of other elements that would go into that decision-making process, and this is just one, one component.
10:00 PM, July 5th?
Yes.
Why?
Good question. That's what's in the county ordinance.
Well, that's got to change. That's, that's the lowest hanging fruit I've heard all day here.
And then, Barbie, other things not on this list, I mean, you alluded to legal fireworks, and I think you made a statement about legal fireworks in metropolitan areas. Are these things, have these shown effectiveness in other metropolitan areas that are wrestling with us?
I know our supervising investigator lives in an area that has had a ban on all fireworks and does not experience the same. Beyond that, we have, have we done outreach to every single, you know, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Orange County? I'm sure they still have problems, but at least you know, if you're seeing something, it is illegal, period. And the availability isn't, isn't out there. And people do purchase some of the Safe and Sane products, those do get modified at home by people, also causing problems, so.
And I know we may be giving some staff direction today, but certainly you heard one direction just now from my colleague, which I agree with, but in terms of, you know, you talk about opportunities to pair, that's, that's just being reactive. I mean, I do think, you know, I'm looking over at Chief Peterson and Sergeant Matranga over there, and I would like to, you know, have that further discussion with the sheriff about what would it take to get some, in the days, maybe teaming up them in the days leading up to the Fourth, to do some, some more robust interdiction efforts and find out what that, you know, might cost us. But I mean, I think we can probably do a lot more in that space, I think.
I will tell you, we didn't discuss this before, but one of the opportunities that we have with the community being able to send in their written input to that report fireworks email that the county is using, we did get reports of sales sites for fireworks, and we did reach out, I can't talk too much about these, but unfortunately this year we weren't any, weren't able to bring together any buy-bust operations. People got spooked, didn't show up, but that is going on in the background, just that, don't think that we're just coming out on the first.
Right, but I know it's finite resources to do it, so I mean, maybe, and here's another thing, I thought about this, even if I have to fund with District 3 TOT funds or reward, you know, I mean, maybe work through Crime Stoppers where, hey, $1,000 reward to rat out your neighbor if it results in a, you know, conviction, or, I mean, what about, what about doing something like that? Have you explored that or discussed that in your working group?
That is not one of the items that we've discussed so far, but certainly something we can bring back. I'm open to pretty much anything that's going to be successful, so.
Because I think, I think people are going to keep doing those things on the ladders because it's fun, they know they're not going to get caught, but they're also inclined to, if I can get, you know, I'll rat out my neighbor if I can get a $1,000 reward or something for it.
I'll throw my own drone up in the air.
Yeah.
Well, I think that it's an education piece on what safe use looks like. I was really, I was really surprised to see what I saw on the street. I don't know how we got to the point where people are taking their children literally into the middle of the road. You know, I stopped and talked to as many people as we could, so it was kind of surprising, and that tells me we've got some fine-tuning on what our education messaging needs to be to stop that.
I think it's happening all over the place. Okay. All right, no questions at this point, so I guess we'll go to a public comment. Oh, Dennis, are you, you're going, do you public comment? Oh, you're, you're the last, okay, that's great, that'll be good, all right.
Hi. So, Lee Miller, District 5. So, you know, both agencies have in the past asked the efficiency, the safety and the effectiveness of the social host ordinance. There are more than 55 counties and cities that have implemented similar ordinances without harm to enforcement personnel. Riverside County, they have, which is comparable to what we have here in Sacramento, County has a successful program, and we have asked several times over the years that SSO and Metro Fire reach out to these organizations, the other counties, the other cities that do have successful programs in place, and find out what they're doing to enhance the program so that the social host ordinance is being used effectively. The other thing that I've noticed is that, Barry, thank you for writing the 636 letters, which resulted in maybe eight citations. And this has been a problem over the years also, where not only SSO, but people, people like me don't know what to put in those reports in order to make it a successful report to turn into a citation. We talked to Eric about that last year, about an educational program that maybe needs to be done with the public to tell people what to do. The other thing is, you know, so there are ways to educate people on that, you know, webinars and all that kind of stuff. Also, I did a survey as residents against illegal fireworks, and we had 300 responses in a matter of a week and a half. If you go ahead and you extrapolate that, 300 complaints from constituents as a sample size for our survey, we arrive at 25,319 complaints. I would, I would really ask the Board of Supervisors to please take the time and reach out to your constituents, develop some kind of standard survey so that you guys can see where the problem areas are. I was shocked when I looked at it with only 300 results, and I showed everybody that. So I really think that part of the, part of the solution is for a survey to be issued out to constituents in each one of the districts and figure out where the problem areas are so we can keep improving it year after year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
John Koskovich? Okay.
Chris?
Hello, can you hear me? Stay. Hi, my name is Chris Archulet, a little bit about me real quick, veteran, I've been blown up, I got a piece of rocket and mortar in my legs, I've been blown up, run explosions, former law enforcement, former fire. I've been blown up, run explosions, former law enforcement, former fire. And so what I think that, when I kicked this off, is that, remember that John Adams, our second president, said we got to celebrate this 4th with illuminations. So I think what we're missing here, I'm going to wear a lot of hats, so stick with me. We're missing a chance, when I go out and have these parties, because I'm happily retired from both now, is I do have my beer, and we're missing a chance to bring people like, together like national night out. When PD comes by, checks on me, we show them what we got, we raise our beers, they're gone. And so, and they ask, hey, who's lighting the big ones? I'm like, hey, man, that's not cool. I don't think it's not fair to ask our neighbors to snitch versus the illegal. It's a bad look and a bad feel. So what we can do is we have our solutions in the room. What we need is a party. You guys have to have a party. You got to have these guys to see what they need, to arm them with those guys, to see what they need. But I think it's really messed up to punish like, guys like me, who have my vet friends and over, and we're having the Safe and Sane for the kids, you know, and now I put it on a ladder, so I'm looking at a $1,000 fine. Man, I paid the taxes there, I paid all that, it's a bad look, I don't like it. As a citizen, I want to be able to celebrate my illuminations. I don't like the loud booms that sound like I'm going to get hit again. I don't freak out anymore, but I just don't like them. And I could see why people don't like them. But I think we got to take a moment to kind of really focus on, hey, those don't batch us in with the knucklehead, so to speak. And you're right. Now, after this meeting, what's stopping me from getting the illegals? A $1,000 fine? It's sending, it's like a parent with no consequence. Why should we? Why should the citizens of Sacramento respect anything coming out of here? If that's, I'm going to get a letter from that guy who says, don't do it again? Party's at my house next year. And if we're going to the affluent, I had to look that word up, neighborhoods, then charge them. Give the code enforcement dude a few dudes to charge them. They got these things called GoPros and body cans to get a, you're looking for a conviction for your citation, you have the bloody tools. Make sure it's constitutionally correct. Let those organizations fundraise and be a part of the community. But if you go too heavy-handed, you're going to send the wrong message, how law enforcement's supposed to look in this community. And you're missing on a great opportunity to bring everybody together, especially after COVID. COVID brought our neighborhood together with these fireworks.
Thanks, Chris.
So you're missing on a great opportunity. I hope you guys choose right and make some decisions for the community.
Thank you. Okay, Dennis. We'll give you a little more latitude in time. I'm sure we'll have some questions for you.
I was going to say good morning when I came here, but good afternoon, Chair Desmond, members of the board. My name is Dennis Ravel, President and CEO of Ravel Communications. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of our client, TNT Fireworks, the state's leading wholesale distributor of Safe and Sane fireworks. I come before you today to remind everyone of the rationale for the board adopting a fireworks social host ordinance and the county's administrative fine process back in May of 2022. And offer, I think it offers the safest and most effective way for the county to impact the unabated, increasingly high use of illegal fireworks in the unincorporated area of the county. On the slide, you'll see that while the discharge of illegal fireworks can be tied to a specific property, it's often difficult, as the Fire Marshal stated, to determine who actually initiated the discharge. The owner or tenant of a property is often in the best position to control or prevent the use of illegal fireworks on that property. And SAC Metro Fire and SAC Sheriff have already stated, both in their minutes and before this body today, that they're understandably reluctant to send personnel into an illegal fireworks environment that poses a serious threat to their personnel's safety. The fireworks social host ordinance provides both of these agencies the ability to cite a responsible person without having any contact or interaction with the violator or posing any potential harm to the personnel. A fireworks social host ordinance citation is an administrative fine, not a criminal misdemeanor violation. It does not require that it be committed in the presence of an officer. The third-party reporting that properly documents a violation is sufficient grounds to issue a citation. And an administrative citation only needs proof of just enough evidence to make it more than likely that the illegal fireworks violation actually occurred. The suggestions I would offer this morning in terms of alternative enforcement components are that to have the Sheriff's Office personnel focus on sellers of illegal fireworks and the dangerous gatherings with large volumes of illegal fireworks. Secondly, solve the lack of adequate sheriff personnel deployment by having SAC Metro go to a fire-centric approach for nonviolent use of illegal fireworks. By this, I mean having the 18 fire inspectors team up with code enforcement personnel and/or trained county employees to drive around in unmarked cars using 4K night vision binocular video and still cameras, as SAC City does and half a dozen other jurisdictions in the state, to document the violations pursuant to a written policy. I've given the board a copy of SAC City's policy on how a citation should be written. To my knowledge, that doesn't exist for the county. The necessary documentation, how these individuals must conduct themselves. The city of Sacramento and many of the jurisdictions that have successfully employed a social host ordinance have an actual deployment policy. Don't go down blind alleys, don't get any closer than X number of hundreds of yards, et cetera. That policy doesn't exist in the county. And last, have the certain volunteers man a fireworks hotline dispatch center that 911 and non-emergency dispatch operators can transfer all calls regarding illegal fireworks use and use the online backend portal to load those complaints into the system so that this county has a contemporaneous hotspot mapping showing where the problem areas are. I'd be happy to respond to all of the questions that you had.
I don't see any, anybody queued up to speak right now, any supervisors, but what I will say is, I asked my question, I don't have a question for you right now, Dennis, so thank you. Eric, what will be the next step? Are you going to take some of the feedback you're hearing? And will this group continue to meet and come up with some additional ideas? What's the next step from here?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I will be doing another team meeting of the lead members of the task force, and I will, we will be discussing a lot of the recommendations we've heard today, as well as some direction that we received from the board. We're going to add, for example, the district attorney's office to the conversation. We'll rediscover the administrative fines and fees with both county council and code. And then a lot of the recommendations that you got by the task force members here, we will be discussing as well.
Okay, and I would say, I mean, you know, Dennis's point about certainly technology, not just reporting technology, but other detection technology that might be out there, you know, look at some of that. But I also think the evidentiary question to me is, I mean, that's an important one. Are we imposing an evidentiary burden that maybe we don't need? I mean, so I would like to hear back a little more on that, you know?
Right.
Compared to what maybe would other municipalities have done and that has been successful. And I know we only implemented this, what, a year ago, right? I think we passed this last year. Yes.
Sure. I believe last year I made a suggestion, I don't know if it went anywhere, but I made a suggestion about the Safe and Sane booths either offering at no charge or selling at some discounted rate, metal pale buckets with the strong message, this is how you safely dispose of used Safe and Sane fireworks. You know, fill a metal bucket with water, soak them. Because we continue to hear from the people sitting in back here, Dennis, about the fires that are started by, you know, people not getting the message, don't put, you know, fireworks that haven't been drenched for some minimal amount of time, submerged for a certain minimum amount of time. Don't put them in your garbage, and for God's sakes, don't put the garbage in the garage. I mean, I hate to, you know, get very near the line of trying to legislate common sense here, but it seems to me that if you're going to be in the business of selling Safe and Sane fireworks, it seems like you'd be doing it yourself a favor too by just, you know, also sending the message at the time of purchase, here's how you safely dispose of the product we're selling you.
If you'd like me to respond, I'd be happy to.
Sure.
We looked at that and in terms of the numbers and volumes that we would have to have at each stand, or whether we would offer a coupon with a corresponding participating outlet like Home Depot, Lowe's, or whoever. And ultimately decided to construct a social media and television PSA that we spent close to $20,000 over a six-day period to run here in the greater Sacramento area, and actually in other jurisdictions as well and on social media. So, but we think that that's something that we would like to continue to explore and if we need to expand on.
Yeah, maybe the county needs to talk directly to the Home Depots of the world and the Lowe's of the world. Put your branding on this metal bucket, you know? And, you know, do you satisfy some of your community service by offering these things free to folks that want to take advantage of having a, you know, the means to safely dispose of the fireworks?
Chair, if I could respond to just a couple of other things.
Make it quick, Dennis.
I'll be happy to share with you all a copy of this chart. This is a summary of what has happened in other jurisdictions that have a social host ordinance, and there was reference to Riverside County. And I would also point out the city of Salinas. City of Salinas has an issue with their police department being incredibly overworked and understaffed, and they put together a program in which they offered a financial incentive for city staff to be part of the deployment to document the violations. You can see that it was highly successful in that they issued 110 citations, one of which because they used what's called stacking. If someone was held up in a house who was armed and shot at five different officers, they would be charged with an attempted murder charge for each attempt. The same applies here. For each illegal fireworks item that is lit, Salinas cites them for it. So one individual got cited $37,500. And they were able to have significant deployment in a challenging environment using just fire and city personnel.
Okay. Well, I think this can be, you know, Eric, this can be part of the discussion or evaluation of the fines and fees and evidentiary issues. Maybe look at some of these other ordinances and some of the results.
If I may, Chair, speaking to the social host ordinance specifically about the administrative function with that, yes. Well, we will reexamine that with county council and code.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
Dennis, you mentioned SAC City using the night vision equipment and deploying extra staff and so forth. And are they having success with that? Because I have the impression they're like a war zone there also.
I think we need to understand and appreciate the total of the environment we're in. We're in an environment where this problem has been allowed to develop over the last 10 to 15 years. The state has not performed its responsibility in keeping this stuff out of California. The access and the variety of materials that is easily available across the border, and no attempt to stop it from coming in, has brought a ton of this stuff into California. I mean, one of you asked, well, if there's any figures as to what these stores are doing. One store in a letter to the Nevada Legislature said they did $45 million. And you know it wasn't being sold to the people of Perump, because they're restricted. They can't use it in Perump. So the problem has gotten very severe. And in defense of both the sheriff and the SAC Metro, it has gotten so severe that it's difficult to contain and impact. And what we're talking about is coming up with innovative ways to try and do that until the state and the federal government do their, perform their responsibility to stop this stuff from coming in.
I probably heard it wrong then. Did you say SAC City is doing that?
SAC City has experienced significant improvements in citations. I think they were at 169 citations last year.
Oh, wow. No?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm getting a different message from Metro Fire, but...
The 4K binocular cameras that they use, they bought on Amazon for $150 apiece, and I think they have eight of them deployed.
Well, I think those buckets supplied by TNT, each one could have a pair of those binoculars inside. How about that? Is that what you're proposing? Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and keep my comments brief here. First of all, Dennis, thank you for this. When we had the Zoom call, I had asked for a list of the other jurisdictions. If you could take this to the next level between you and Lee Miller and actually write down what are the mechanisms that get these results and how they overcome some of the obstacles that Barry was mentioning relative to holding, standing up in court. And then I'll just say generally that I support expanding the enforcement of our social host ordinance, including looking at how we can stack fines or whatever else. I support the use of drones and maybe even fixed wing with telephoto lens or something that can go back after the fact and catch explosions happening from properties so that we can, you know, it doesn't have to be in real time. We can send somebody a citation a week after the 4th if we've determined we were able to isolate that address at that point. And then I think as we heard consensus from my colleagues to amend our code to stop sales on the 4th. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you interested in starting sales one day later as recommended? Or do you want to continue to start on the 28th?
I would support, I would support.
Yes, that's what I was, I was assuming that, but I wanted to verify. Thank you.
29th to the 4th.
Yes.
Okay, so Eric, we'll get a report back at some point. Okay, so with that, we will not, we're not going to have closed session. So we'll be limiting closed session, and we will reconvene at 2:30, if that's okay with you. I'll just give us enough time. Okay, we are on recess until 2:30. It's 2:35. I'll call the meeting back to order, ask clerk to call the roll to establish quorum.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, we'll move right into our afternoon calendar, item 50.
Item 50 is the Alberta Specific Plan Amendment, a major amendment to the Alberta Specific Plan to change the applicability of the rezone conditions of Appendix D as they relate to agricultural residential properties in the northwest quadrant of the specific plan. The environmental document is an addendum to Alberta Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report.
Good afternoon, Emma.
All right, good afternoon. I'm Emma Patton, Senior Planner, and this afternoon I'll be presenting the Alberta Specific Plan Amendment. So I'd like to get started with a bit of context. The Alberta Specific Plan is located about 10 miles northeast of downtown Sacramento at the Sacramento County Placer County line, and it's comprised of about 1,744 acres. Alberta Road travels east-west through the specific plan. Area and 16th Street travels north-south. So the yellow line on this map shows the boundary of the Alberta Specific Plan. The Realinda-Alvera Community Plan was adopted in 1998 and directed for the comprehensive planning of what would become the Alberta Specific Plan, which was later adopted in 2007. Since 2007, the county has approved several minor and major plan amendments and four tentative subdivision maps totaling 2,386 lots. The county is currently processing three additional maps, which total 131 lots. On this map, you can see the approved and in-process tentative maps. Notably, earlier this year, the board approved the Alberta 245 subdivision, which consists of approximately 680 residential units that pre- 680 residential units that project is shown on, in red on this map. While a number of tentative maps have been approved within the Alberta specific plan, staff in coordination with the development community have identified a number of implementation challenges related to development of the Alberta specific plan. To address these implementation challenges, staff conducted a workshop with the board back in June of 2021. Two of the items that were discussed during that workshop included barriers impeding, development of agricultural residential or AR properties within the specific plan, and the cost in delivery of roadway infrastructure. During that meeting, the board asked staff to repair an amendment to the specific plan to reduce the barriers impeding development of agricultural residential properties and to explore possibilities to reduce roadway infrastructure delivery costs. This afternoon, I'll be presenting the specific plan amendment related to the specific plans AR designated properties, followed by a presentation by Cameron Chu with Department of Transportation, who will discuss strategies to reduce roadway fees in the Alberta specific plan. So when projects are planned within the specific plan area, they generally need to rezone to zones consistent with the specific plan land use plan. When they do, the specific plan rezone conditions related to financing of facilities, maintenance and operation, the specific plan wide roadway, drainage, trails, park improvements, and mitigation measures are all applied to these projects through rezone conditions. Now, there's a variety of land use, land uses planned within the specific plan with denser residential and commercial uses planned toward the center of the plan and with less dense uses planned on the outward areas of the plan. The northwest quadrant of the specific plan, bound in red on this map, is all designated for AR land uses, specifically AR 1 through 5. These properties are allowed under the specific plan to rezone up to a density of AR 1, but in doing so, they would currently be subject to the full breadth of the rezone conditions, which could be considered a heavy lift and financially burdensome on the AR property owners who, in all likelihood, if they rezoned these properties, would propose relatively small parcel maps and subdivisions compared to the rest of the specific plan, which is intended to be developed with much denser development. The request before you today is an amendment to the specific plan that would change the applicability of the rezon conditions as they relate to these AR properties in the northwest quadrant. The intent of the amendment is to reduce financial barriers for these property owners, some of whom may want to rezone their properties as allowed by the specific plan. With the amendment, the rezones in the northwest quadrant would remain subject to the rezon conditions to dedicate land for any required onsite improvements and mitigate for their project impacts. But with this amendment, they would no longer be subject to offsite improvements. While these properties would no longer be responsible for the actual construction or land dedication related to offsite improvements, they would remain subject to their fair share fees to fund the ultimate offsite improvement. This proposal was brought to the Rielinda and Alberta CPAC, who recommended its unanimous approval. The Planning Commission later met on July 24, 2023 and did not provide a recommendation. Some of the commissioners had concerns that the proposed amendments would affect the development of public amenities such as parks and trails in the northwest quadrant. After deliberation, one commissioner made a motion to recommend the board approve the specific plan amendment. Commissioners ultimately voted two yes, one no, and one abstention, with one member absent resulting in a failed motion. There was no additional motion made during the Planning Commission meeting, and so the Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission did not ultimately provide a recommendation to the board. While some of the members of the Planning Commission had concerns about the proposed amendments resulting in reduced public amenities such as park and trails within the specific plan, staff notes that the proposed amendment would not result in any land use changes to the planned, land use changes to the specific plan, nor changes to any planned park or trail infrastructure. Instead, the amendment would only remove AR properties from being responsible for the dedication of or improvements to offsite trails and parks, roadway infrastructure, and drainage infrastructure, a burden that is disproportionate to the development that would likely occur in the northwest quadrant of the specific plan. As the proposed amendment is in compliance with the applicable general plan policies, the community plan policies, and the specific plan policies, as there are no environmental concerns, and as the amendment would reduce barriers for AR rezones and subdivisions as allowed by the specific plan, staff is recommending approval of this request. Specifically, staff recommends that you determine that the previously certified specific plan EAR and addendum with the sequel addendum prepared for this request is adequate and complete, and that you approve the resolution amending the specific plan. That does conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Emma. I don't see any supervisors in the queue. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
First, I want to thank staff. This is something that we've been talking about for, I think, a couple, if not several years. And I want to thank you for your out of the box thinking and figuring out how we could address this for some of those that are in the northwest quadrant. And thank you for the briefing, Todd. And, and I want to just move approval.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. We have a motion. A second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay. Item 51 is the Alberta specific plan roadway fee workshop.
Good afternoon, Cameron.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Cameron Chu, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation. Today, we are going to be presenting on the Alberta specific plan roadway fee and transportation workshop. So this is the third one of these transportation mitigation workshops we've done here at the board, the first two being for North Vineyard Station and the Florin Vineyard Community Plan. So now we're moving on to the Alberta specific plan and looking at how we can address some transportation infrastructure challenges. So as Emma mentioned, this plan goes all the way back to 1998. There's a map from the original traffic study, and it just kind of shows that one of the big challenges of the, challenges of this plan is that there's a really big traffic shed. There's a lot of roadway improvements that are required all around the area surrounding Alberta. And there was a pretty large list of improvements that were determined in that original study. In total, looking at just over $350 million worth of improvements between the roadway level service impacts they trigger, touch triggers like roadway shoulders and fair share payments. In total, the obligations of this plan come to around $75,000 a unit before other county roadway fees, making this one of the most expensive roadway projects for specific plans. So before we even started looking at the, the triggers and what the first phases of it would have to build, we realized that there was going to be a really heavy lift in terms of the roadway fee burden and whether or not that would make the project pencil out. And initially, this effort kind of stalled because of that. But using DOT staff time, we decided to pick this up and see if we could get it over the finish line. And we've been fortunate to have the participation of a number of the development interests out there that have sat through monthly meetings on this to give their input on the topic. So that's how we got to where we are today. So the purpose of this workshop is to really go over different fee strategies and how we can approach a future fee program for this area that'll make development more feasible, rather than looking at individual triggers like we've done in the other plan areas. So one of the first things that we looked at was fair share versus construction approach. So if the project triggers $100 million project, but only has 10% of the traffic, instead of putting the full $100 million in the fee program, we could just put in their fair share of 10%. And then the rest of the obligations would come from other regional funding sources, such as the SCTDF, which is the countywide roadway fees. And just putting the fair share instead of the total construction cost in their fee program does reduce the fees by quite a bit. Another idea we looked at was expanding the scope of the existing SCTDF roadway projects. So if there's certain improvements like culverts that would enhance existing projects in the SCTDF, rather than putting it in Alberta's fee program, we just put in the countywide fees and spread the cost out more. Along that same logic, we looked at some local signalized intersections, which is typically where a collector or a two lane road meets an arterial or thoroughfare or a six lane road. Usually those are paid for in local roadway fee programs rather than through countywide fees, although there are benefits to countywide roadway circulation. And we could look at putting those as part of the overall countywide fee program to do some more cost spreading. Another idea was touch sugars, which is when the first development touches the roadway, they're forced to make improvements. And there's some really long segments of roadways, such as Dry Creek Road or Paliday Road, where the first person to touch those roads would be hit with a lot of improvements. So we can break those up into smaller segments and look at the traffic volumes, see when those are really necessary, rather than doing it right away. And then lastly, we could look at some outside funding assumptions as a way to help lower the fee burden. One of the challenges with the outside funding assumptions is getting grant funding. It is becoming more challenging to fund a lot of especially capacity increasing projects, although DOT was able to do that recently on the Alberta Road from Watt to Dutch Haven project. And we do know there's some fair share money coming in from Placer County. So we think that probably a $15 or $20 million assumption of outside funding could be reasonable in this plan. So we put it all together, looking at these different strategies and their compounding effects. It gets the roadway fees down from starting up over $90,000 to potentially as low as $37,000 if all of these strategies are employed, and could go even less than that depending on the outside funding assumptions we put in there. Of course, one of the disadvantages is the smaller the roadway fee, the more funding gap we'll have to make up, especially early on. So with the high fee, we end up with a surplus. With the lowest fee, there's going to be a $43 million, $43 million deficit to fill for the first 1,200 units, which is something that we'd have to make up for with grant funding or allocating countywide roadway fees or other sources. So to tie this back to the previous item, one of the other things we're looking at is for those agriculture residential properties, there is a requirement that they pay the roadway fees, which we don't currently have a roadway fee program. So by getting some direction today, we can come up with some interim roadway fees to allow those developments to move forward, while at the same time, Alberta would be able to take this guidance and hire a consultant to establish a roadway fee program. And once we have a roadway fee program in place, we can look at the different strategies that the board's already authorized, such as moving triggers around, potentially partnering with development to deliver some of these projects as capital projects, and figure out how to make the first few phases of Alberta work. So with that, DOT is looking for some feedback about whether the board supports these different staff recommendations. Everything we've brought today is something that DOT can support. Granted, there's the different trade offs that I discussed. But yeah, looking for some feedback on that.
All right. Thank, thank you, Cameron. We'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the presentation. So you've given us what we always want, which are options, which I appreciate. I would like to know to what extent each of these, or perhaps all of them will, will serve as a very, well, will serve as a, an example for other master plans. And can we count on them to want the same strategy deployed for their roadway, the use of their roadway fees and the timing of it? Is it going to be precedent setting is what I'm asking. And if so, you know, what projects and how soon can we expect that it is going to be precedent setting?
Yeah, I think that it is a precedent setting approach. And some of these things, like adding the local signals in, I can expect that if we do it here in Alberta, that other developments are also going to want to put their local signals in the countywide roadway fees. And the broader effect that that would have would be to generally increase the countywide roadway fees, but decrease the specific plan fees. As far as, let's see, the other ones we talked about were outside grant funding. I think that's a very case by case thing where you have to look at the different roadways and see what a reasonable funding assumption is, see if we know there's other funding sources coming from neighboring jurisdictions. But yeah, I expect after all this, there will need to be a comprehensive update to our countywide roadway fees, incorporate this for not only Alberta, but all these other pending and recently approved master plans that will want something similar.
I appreciate that, that staff is working with the Alberta, in this case, the Alberta specific plan proponents to come up with some options, because I completely appreciate, you know, trying to avoid that super expensive first home. And we're just talking about roadways here. So there's obviously a whole host of other things that are fee financed. And at some point, you can kill a project pretty easily by just having it overloaded with, with fees, and there's no margin left. So, so I get that. I guess my concern is, and I don't know how to really articulate, articulate it that well, is will any, will any of these strategies leave us, leave a project in the future holding the bag or the county holding the bag in terms of unfunded, the unfunded ability to complete roadways at some point for some project?
I mean, it is a potential issue. We could come to a point in the future where a project gets triggered, and we look at the level of service and say, can we push it anymore? And no, the project does need to get built. So at that time, we could end up in a situation where either we have to decide to prioritize that project with our own SCTDF money, or else maybe development has to front the money to build that project and wait for reimbursement, which is the way it currently exists today.
Right. And I can just imagine at that point, the uproar that I could, you know, here in the distance, that they want to be treated just like everyone else at that point. And we kind of find ourselves in the complete 180 of where we are today. So I guess what I would like to know is like, which, which of the strategies in staff's opinion minimizes kind of that risk the most? That's kind of how I want to understand these options.
I mean, really, that comes down to strategy one, I would say, whether do we program the full dollar amount for what it's going to really cost to build it? Or do we just put in the fair share amount?
But that, but that at the same time would make the projects questionable in terms of their feasibility, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So it's kind of like, do you, do you have a higher fee that you know will have the funding available at the time it gets triggered? Or do you have a lower fee, give them a more certain path of starting, but then have to look later on when there's a funding gap?
Well, I can, I can sense my colleague to my left is just itching to chime in here.
Well, I think Mr. Vicari is also wants, you want to chime in on this run?
Sure. Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. One of the things I did want to add is that some of the strategies that we're employing here are to basically newer developments already have the ability to utilize those strategies. So this really is looking at an old development that is, has some very difficult, isn't, we're not able to employ the strategies that we already have in place. So a lot of these strategies will, will allow this development to also take advantage of strategies other developments are already utilizing.
Okay, that's good. I mean, it's good to hear you say it that way. Otherwise, I'm kind of left with the, the opinion of this being so precedent setting that it's, it set some new standard that we can't some, you know, at some point in the future meet. And that's my comments about some future project that is just, you know, not going to be feasible whatsoever because we have to load everything we, you know, lost for three years in terms of the fee structure on that project to get the roads built. So what I'm hearing you say is that what you're proposing with these strategies is a way to gain parity, I guess, with some of the other master plan projects?
That's true, with the exception of what Cameron mentioned earlier, which is we do anticipate that there'll be some plan areas that also want to include signals, local signals in the plan area. So that's a new option that, that, that we think may be somewhat precedent setting, as you mentioned. The other thing I'd like to add is we certainly nowadays look, utilize our SCTDF fees and look ahead at all the different plan areas to see where, where really the, the need is. And we strategize and use that funding. So we are in essence going to be required, you know, there is going to be a need to really focus in on looking ahead, trying to be a partner with development, make sure that we don't hit those situations, get out in front of it. In addition to that, we updated our credit reimbursement policy. So we could find ourselves in a situation where a in a situation where a particular improvement needs to be built and there's not funding at the time, which case, like we always have had, the developer, as Cameron mentioned, there's, we would utilize SCTDF fees, we'd try to get outside funding, but there still is that option that the developer would have to front those fees. But we do have a credit reimbursement policy in place now to assure a timely, basically a timely credit and timely reimbursement strategy for them so they have some assurance that they would get their money back over a reasonable amount of time. So again, it is a full partnership. We've been extremely aggressive in working with developers and we fully plan to continue to do that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So, you know, obviously when I'm looking at the four tables and I see, my eye goes to the lowest one and I go, that's the one we should, we should go after. But as you pointed out in your PowerPoint, really, it's not absolving anybody of anything. It's just shifting the funding mechanism away from the localized development over the larger county as a whole. And as we saw, creating a $43 million gap that has to be made up somewhere. Am I interpreting everything correctly so far?
Yeah, I guess the one way I'd clarify is it's not spread necessarily evenly over the entire county. It's still based on fair shares. We have different fee districts in the SCTDF. So people would pay fees based on what fee district they're in. So the Alberta, the fee district that Alberta is in would probably have 90, 95% of those local signal costs in it.
Okay.
Versus folks that are the south end of the county would probably be paying less than 1% towards the signals.
And is that in part due to the fact that you cannot, you can't shift the nexus of mitigating impacts to different areas from once they're created?
Correct.
Okay. And so if I were looking at this and looking at the box that is strategy one plus two A, it looks like the difference in that is a lesser expanded SCTDF TIF and a slightly higher local roadway fees. So is that keeping then the burden of those intersections? Is that essentially what makes up the difference in that fee cost?
The question is basically why the local fees would go, or the local roadway fees would go down but the overall SCTDF would go up?
Yes, if you want to take the obverse. I was asking it the other way, but sure, yeah.
Yeah, so what's basically happening there is when you add in those additional projects that like, say additional culverts under Alberta Road that aren't currently in the SCTDF, by putting them in the program, it does make the SCTDF fees go up a little bit, which is that $1,277 increase. But that's spread out over all development, mostly within Alberta's fee district. And consequently, Alberta's local fees instead of having to go towards those culverts would go down from that $42,000 to that $26,000. So yeah, that's primarily the effect of spreading out the costs from Alberta to other development within Alberta's district.
Okay. And so then I mentioned the word nexus previously. I know that that is a legally binding position. Do all of these strategies pass muster relative to new growth paying its fair share?
Yes, we're comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. All right, anything else, Cameron?
No.
Okay, then we'll go to public comment. Do we have a comment on this one?
Laura Zuckerman. I'm sorry, I just switched my back.
And just to be clear, staff is asking for some direction or guidance from the board on this. There's no other official action.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Zuckerman and I appreciate you guys' time today. I'm with TCS Planning and Town Development and I work with Jeff Pembstein and we manage the Alberta Owners Group. And behalf of the Owners Group, we are appreciative of the county's time and effort working with us through these triggers and the numerous meetings that they've had to get to this point. We just wanted to state that we are supportive of strategy one plus two A plus two B, the localized signalized intersections. And from our perspective, coming as a developer and a builder, the impact fee that would be good and more feasible for us is between $25,000 to $30,000 per lot. So it falls a bit short of where it needs to be, but we really feel we're moving in the right direction with these triggers. And we look forward to working with the county and with DOT to try to get to where we need to be so we can move forward and bring housing into Alberta where there's a huge need in the county for today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
George Carpenter.
He just left.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Tim Kim.
Good afternoon, Tim.
Good afternoon. Chair Desmond, members of the board. I am Tim Kim and good to see you this afternoon. Appreciate your time on this. So we are one of the owners in Alberta specific plan and I personally have been working on this project for about 17 years. The owner bought it a little over 20 years ago. So, long project. Interesting that we've always thought, hey, the costs are way too high. How are we going to make this work? And we've spent a lot of time working with our engineer, who's actually here today, doing cost estimates, running residual analysis. And then, so our project is about 300 acres and spread across three properties. Two of them are in that pending list, so I'll be back to see you soon for those tenant maps. But, so we have over 1,000 units plus we have commercial, like the town center and some other commercial. So we did all this analysis on cost and, you know, part of the market was strong for certain product types. So we went out to market. And it's interesting because I kept saying it's too expensive, but we thought, well, the owner said, let's go out to market, let's prove it and maybe we'll get a good offer. And so we had a tremendous amount of interest. And so it was good to see that people had interest in this area and they were folks looking to do entry-level housing, which is, you know, right for this area. And I had about 10 groups come and talk to me and gave them all the cost estimates, all the information. They ran their numbers and not a single one would make an offer, but they all started with a very high interest. And they said, these numbers, you can't even make an offer because the infrastructure, you basically have zero land value. So we appreciate all the work that staff's done. It's a great approach. I agree with what Laura said, that we highly recommend you look at the one plus two A plus two B. That gets you to $37,000 a door. We too, we're hoping to be more in the 20,000 to 30,000 a door to make it pencil. So appreciate your time. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Tim.
Beck, conclude your comments.
Okay. I don't see any supervisors queued up. Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and lead out on this one. I mean, I think there are certain impact mitigation fees that get paid that are maybe a little more nebulous. Roadways don't fall in that category for me. If we don't have a way to build that road and maintain that road, it's not going to happen. And every year, we agonize over how to spend the paltry amount of roadway money that we get for maintenance. And so to the extent we're adding more roads, we're increasing that need and making life more and more difficult. And so I heard the speakers and I heard the desire to get this down into the $25,000 to $30,000 range. But in looking at what staff has prepared, certainly we're making a vast improvement over $91,000, which is just, that's not even in the realm of realistic expectation. But when you look at the hole that adding two B, which is the local signalized intersections onto the strategy, it jumps your gap at the end of the 1,200 units by $9 million, which is roughly $7,500 a unit, which is what the difference between strategy one, one plus two A versus adding in two B. So I'm certainly willing to hear from my colleagues, but I would probably be leading towards strategy one plus two A and then figuring out if there isn't some other way to reduce the fee burden within Alberta to make it a little more palatable. But if we don't bring in the money to build the roads, we're just kicking the can, pardon the expression, down the road. And, you know, somebody's going to be left holding the bag eventually.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
I was wondering if, Ron, you could comment on, is there a way to recapture, what was your thought, what was your thought regarding the deficit? If we do one plus two A plus two B and the timeline as those, as that plan unfolds, do you see, you know, recoup, money recouped that could, could lower the delta with that deficit? Or is it just, we're going to then be allocating another 20 or 40 million for roads that year out of the general fund?
Yeah, so again, Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation, all the strategies that we've put forward are things that we can support. I think the most significant and probably the strategies that get us the farthest forward are the ones that are being recommended. And I think one thing that's maybe missed is this allows us then to also look at triggers, push triggers to when they're actually needed by traffic modeling, which we have the ability now in-house to do so we can start to slide triggers. So some of those gaps that you're looking at in approving what the, what the speakers had asked for will allow us to also push those triggers out, why we continue to have SCTDF revenue accumulate, why we continue to look for outside funding. So we can start to slide those triggers, the ones that we can do from a traffic standpoint. So that's certainly the biggest strategy. Putting in the signals, the local signals into the plan option does reduce the costs. We see it as something we can support because it is something that we would build if we built the project. We would, knowing that developments were coming forward, we would go ahead and include those signals in our projects. But it does add money to it. And then the last one that we threw out there, which was looking at, kind of looking at some outside funding and anticipated outside funding, we feel comfortable in that $15,000 to $20 million range because we know we're going to get money from Placer that's already in the pipeline. We did get awarded a contract on Watt, on Alberta, Watt to Dutch Haven. So we think we could reasonably anticipate future funding. But again, that's, 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 that's looking at funding we don't yet have. So certainly supportive and think that the first, the options being recommended get us the farthest distance to being successful. But DOT can also support the remaining if that's, if that's something the board desires.
So what you're saying is that these options are projections, but it's kind of like a moving, it's a moving situation where as you're working with the triggers, it could actually, we could realize less of a deficit than you had anticipated.
Yeah, and I think the clearest way to put this is that's a deficit, looking at the revenue coming in from the Alberta specific plan, to be able to fund their own improvements. So that puts you in the case of maybe they have to build those improvements and seek reimbursement. But it also doesn't take into account that we have a countywide SCTDF fee. So that, part of that deficit, as we start to look at the most important projects, can be, we can build the infrastructure with the other SCTDF revenue not coming specifically from the Alberta specific plan. So again, we'll be partnering to try to make sure that we continue to move forward without ever hitting a spot where we have to stop development.
And so, and if we went for the one plus two A plus two B, because this has been such a problem for so, so long, I mean, they can't move forward, they can't figure out how to move forward, we could feasibly see the deficit building and make adjustments at a later time if we had to. Is that correct?
That is correct. And again, there's other plan areas that certainly want us to focus on the improvements to help them move along. So again, it's just strategizing and utilizing the dynamic tool to work with developments to keep everybody moving forward.
Well, I just want to say that I really appreciate the flexibility of that scenario and I feel like I want to give them what they need to move it forward. So, you know, I know there's concern about that deficit, but it seems like it's, it's not a for sure thing. It seems like it's not written in stone. It's a moving situation. And given that and what you said, I would support one plus two A plus two B. It seems like it would help them, give them the help they need. So, thank you.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Can someone give me an idea what strategy two plus two A plus two B versus one plus two A? Between those two options, what would be the total fee load per door? And I'm talking everything.
Oh, okay, so everything, not outside of roadways?
Not just DOT, not just transportation, but the total fee burden per door.
So there's not a fee program in place for Alberta yet. And so that's very hard to determine. We know that there's substantial other, other issues that need to be worked through in water and other areas. The development community has not put forward the effort to do that because the infrastructure burden was so high that, that what we're hoping is we start to get to a number that shows a path forward and we can start to look into all those other areas.
Maybe, maybe Tim or Holger, someone could maybe enlighten us about what it's, what that total fee load is like in other jurisdictions, just by way of example, if you happen to know that.
Holger might actually have a better number, but I don't know if the microphone...
He pointed you out.
I'm not sure if the microphone goes high enough, though, so I might have to... Yeah, so I work in a lot of jurisdictions up and down the whole state and for, for single family, and I'm working a lot here locally, like Folsom, for example, and a little bit in Rancho Cordova. I don't, although I don't know the latest numbers, maybe Holger does. But we're, you know, we're seeing on single family, probably 100 to 125,000 a door probably, and which feels high to us because this number used to be about 50. And so we're seeing that in some of the higher markets. So when we look at 90-something thousand just for traffic, and we have a high burden for water here in sewer and school and we have affordable and stuff like that. So, so Holger and I were just huddling, we actually ran those numbers. I don't have those with me. He was mentioning maybe they're close to 200. I'm thinking they're a little less than that.
For a standard 2,400 square foot 3-2?
Right. Here, we have a, our, you know, three to five, like three to five units per acre. And so our, our density is running about four per acre. And so up in this area, we're, we're definitely north of 150. Holger was thinking maybe we're close to two, but this would make a significant difference. And, you know, I appreciate the comment that, hey, where else can we look at, which I think Supervisor Hume said, hey, where else can we look at fees? And that's what we're looking at too. This is the first step. If we can get this down, it's great momentum. Then we really get some momentum and start going after a few of the other things to get it all to work.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Well, it sounds like we have, so Supervisor Hume has mentioned strategy one plus two A. Supervisor Frost, one plus two A plus two B. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And you need, what do you need? You need a definitive board consensus on one of these strategies at this point? Ron, is that what you were asking us?
One plus two A.
1 plus 2A and a half.
Split the difference.
So certainly would like, yeah, some direction. One, because we would like to establish an interim fee, as Cameron mentioned, so that smaller developments, you know, 1 to 4 or 1 to 5 could move forward. Certainly could come back at a later date. Our plan is to continue to work with the development community, to think of other strategies. So I hope that this isn't the last one for Alberta. We are hoping to get far enough to see a path forward. So we could start with the lesser and bring this back in front of the board with any additional strategies that we come up with along the way. That's certainly a path forward.
So then that would be starting with 1 plus 2A plus 2B? Is that what you're saying? And then, or start with the other one and coming back and seeing? I mean, we're kind of talking in a vacuum, and Tim, I think you were alluding to this. You're looking at other fees and other impacts. And, you know, that's obviously going to inform this decision and the necessity to do more here. Supervisor Frost?
But we could start with 1 plus 2A plus 2B and make adjustments, you know, also off of that. Or, well, you're going to already establish fees, but--
Yeah, I think if, I think if we're looking at whether or not intersections being added in that particular one, that would cause us to move in a direction to add those to the SCTDF program. So I would probably suggest, recommend that we hold off on that one. And we'll discuss that again with additional strategies. That will come up in other plan areas also. So I would see that being back in front of the board in the relatively near future, and we could discuss that one at that time.
So you're saying, you're saying not go with 1 plus just 2A? Is that what you're saying?
In the interim. I think that's--
In the interim?
Yes. So I would recommend if there's some hesitancy on 2B, which is the intersections, we hold off on that one. Give staff the direction to move forward on the others, the other two, and we'll come back and discuss both the intersections and it seems like possibly also discuss assuming outside funding in the future.
Yeah, and there's Dave DeFanti. So, you know, obviously, a lot of questions as to how this might impact or, you know, be of interest to other developments. So we can do a little bit more homework on that front and come back to you so it's a bit more clear as to the larger picture, as to how that would play out. You know, I really thank DOT for being as creative as they have been getting us to this point. But with each additional step, there does come additional risk, right? And we've talked a lot about taking risks, and I think it's appropriate to take some risks here, but it's really how far do we go? And it is, you know, frankly, a little bit easier to bite off some now and maybe bite off a little bit more later, once we have more information and your comfort level grows, as opposed to biting off a lot right now and then having to retract at a future date and having those fees go back up.
Yeah, no, thank you, Dave. I appreciate that. I'm hearing that. I'm inclined then to, 1 plus 2A, Supervisor Frost, if that's okay with you. Do you need a motion from us, or is that enough?
I think nodding of the board, that that's where the direction we're going, will be fine.
Yeah, and that'll give us a little bit of time, again, to do some homework on some of the other options as well. You know, assuming some level of fee funding, grant funding can absolutely be appropriate, but there's an art to that, right? We don't want to assume, you know, 90% of the fee program is going to be grant funded. We know that's not realistic, but what is a realistic number to bring that fee down? But to a place where we think we can realistically get grant revenue coming in to fill that hole so somebody's not left holding the bag. But I think we're in a good place right now. And again, we still have a little bit more homework to do to bring these fees down further.
Is that okay with you, Supervisor Frost? That approach?
Yeah, I support bringing them down.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Steph. Thank you, DOT. I agree with that comment about, appreciate your creativity. Okay, move to item 52.
Item 52 is conceptually endorse the Arden Way Complete Streets Master Plan.
Do you need it to go up or down?
Probably down. I think that's as far as I get.
It is.
Okay. Okay. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Heather Yee, and I am a Senior Civil Engineer with our Department of Transportation. And I served as the Project Manager for the Arden Way Complete Streets Master Plan. The Arden Way Complete Streets Master Plan focuses on Arden Way between Ethan and Morris Avenue. The County of Sacramento received a grant funding, received a grant funding award under the SAICOG 2018 Funding Cycle. The grant application paired an infrastructure project, which is in gray, from Watt Avenue to Morris, with a planning effort, which is there in blue, which is our study area. The goals were to have a community-engaged process to solidify a framework that informs and shapes future project phases. Here are some current photos of the area. Arden Way was developed in the post-World War II era, originally designed to prioritize vehicular movements within and through the corridor. As infrastructure has deteriorated and traffic volumes and speeds have increased over time, the corridor now acts as a barrier to local community members who might wish to walk, bike, or take transit. The project was kicked off during the pandemic. The way the community was engaged was a little bit different than pre-pandemic processes. We had to be more flexible and spent more engaging with the public. A robust community engagement plan was developed. We took cues from the Department of Planning and Environmental Review, who had previously led community engagement efforts in this part of the county. Outreach efforts included the establishment of a community advisory committee, a project website, a mailing list, email contacts, and community workshops. Myself and my design team walked the entire business corridor, where we visited each business, confirmed the physical address, and got electronic contacts from each business. We gave them a heads-up for a specific workshop and survey targeted at the business community. For each of our community meetings, postcards were mailed, and there were email and social media blasts. A community workshop was held virtually on the evening of May 25, 2021. Due to the current pandemic and necessary safety precautions, the workshop was held via Zoom. There were roughly 55 participants attending. The final community workshop was held December 6, 2022. A business improvement district meeting, we presented this project to them, and a specific business owner survey was developed, and where we asked the business community for its thoughts on existing conditions along the Arden Way corridor, as well as comments on the proposed design. The survey was open for public input for approximately seven weeks, and 24 unique responses were received. The design objectives developed for the master plan aim to integrate the community-guided vision of an aesthetically and economically vibrant corridor with safe and convenient multimodal travel options. This figure shows how two proposed typical sections for Arden Way would be laid out. The different sections are proposed based on available space and the existing roadway constraints. This is Section A, which has the widest right-of-way in the study area and has the least constrained portions of the corridor. The proposed concepts includes creating landscaped buffers primarily on the north side of the roadway between the bike lane and sidewalk. The landscape buffers would incorporate new tree canopy where available. Section B is the most constrained. It narrows and does not allow for a landscape buffer. In this instance, a 1-foot trapezoidal delineator is proposed as a buffer between the bike lane and the sidewalk. The Department of Transportation has not yet secured funding for construction past the Phase 1 project. This is an example of a conceptual roadway on Arden Way. We would utilize these images to secure future grant funding. Today's staff recommendation is for your board to conceptually endorse the Arden Way Complete Streets Master Plan as a framework to inform the future phases of Arden Way. SACDOT will continue pre-construction efforts and will apply for additional grant funding for the subsequent phases of the project. With that, I'm happy to consider any of your questions.
Thank you, Heather. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I just want to confirm with you that that whole stretch of Arden doesn't have any on-street parking on either side, correct?
It does not.
Okay. Where I was going with that is, I just want to make clear that we weren't going to start doing what is being done now in some parts of the city where the cars have been, the street parking has been pushed towards the crown of the road, leaving the corridor for the cyclists between the sidewalk and the cars. I think that's great in terms of safety, but in terms of the amount of kind of unsightly bollards or plastic bollards and whatnot, it just, it looks so, so busy and really detracts, I think, from streetscapes. That's just a personal editorial. Thank you.
With this proposal, we're trying to move away from those delineators and bollards that you are mentioning, which is why we would be putting the bike lane behind a curb and gutter. So it provides that physical separation without the maintenance of those bollards.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Serna, because I absolutely hate that.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I was parked 2 inches into the striped zone, and I got a $50 ticket the other day. Yeah. Someone's got to pay for Howard's. Anyway. So I guess one of the things I wanted to ask, you know, we talk a lot, and a couple of us up here, or three of us up here are on the RT board. Are we conversing with RT as we're going through this for potential BRT lanes? And just overall coordinating with RT on this?
Steve White, Chief Design, Department of Transportation. We haven't considered BRT here. That's not in the general plan. We're just having our typical conversations with RT, just to coordinate when we get to the construction phase.
I understand it's not in the general plan. I get that. But the volume's being turned up on BRT, not just at the RT level, but nationwide. Some, I think, a large percentage of FTA funding is now going to be R T. So I think this is something we're going to see more and more of. So I would not just bring it up in a benign way, but I would be proactive and talk about it.
And I would just add, we're not doing anything that would preclude it.
Okay. Thank you.
And certainly, the conceptual design would be more accommodating to a future BRT, right? Because you have a lot of turnouts or pullouts for--
We do have pullouts for the buses, and with the median and the shared center turn lane, that could be repurposed in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And then another question I had about, I mean, I'm a big supporter of this project. I think these are great. I'm going to start incorporating a trapezoidal delineator into my everyday vernacular. But Heather, the documents you showed or some of the renderings, it shows that two-way left-turn lane staying, but on the rendering here in the PowerPoint at the end, it doesn't have. Will you be doing away with all the two-way left-turn lanes?
No, we were actually, Heather and her team were very sensitive to that, and that really was some of the feedback we got out of the CAC.
I mean, certainly in some places where you're going to have the landscaping, of course, but, okay. I just wasn't sure because I'm looking at the--
We're very sensitive to that. We put it where we could without having a big impact on the ability to navigate the site and make lefts.
Okay. Okay. Any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
Do not have any public comments.
Okay. Well, I will move approval of the conceptual design.
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Okay, thank you, Heather.
unanimous vote. Okay, for item 53, this is the Leary Road Sanchez and Brower Williamson Act Contract Amendment and Lot Line Amendment Adjustment, a board review to rescind and re-enter into Williamson Act contract to amend an existing contract, and a lot line adjustment for properties located at 13900 and 14003 Leary Road in the Delta Community. The environmental determination is exempt.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Todd assured us all, this is actually a really simple thing you're trying to do here, but, you know--
It is. This is, it's very procedural. So a walkthrough should be very quick. So Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review, I'm here to present the Leary Road Sanchez and Brower Williamson Act Contract Modification. So the location of this request is in the Delta Community. All of the properties that are included are off of Leary Road. The nearest intersection is Leary Road and State Highway 220. The sites are primarily used for agricultural purposes, and there are four Williamson Act contracts that coincide with these parcels. The community context, for the most part, properties in and around the project are agriculturally zoned, AG 40 and 80. There are some ag-res parcels to the south. So site and entitlement history, there is currently an application in with our surveyor's office for a boundary line adjustment between the Leary and the, excuse me, the properties owned by the Sanchez family and the Brower family. The lot line adjustment would result in updated property lines, which would better respond to the physical environment and would be more conducive to farming. The primary dividing line would be modified to follow more or less Leary Road. After the review of the boundary line adjustment, planning staff did determine that existing Williamson Act contracts that covered the property would also need to be modified in order for the boundary line adjustment to move forward, which is why we are here today. We also determined that at least one property would result in split zone. There is an existing split zone issue out there. This wasn't necessarily going to increase that issue. It's actually going to reduce it to one property instead of a couple of them that are out there right now. But we felt it was important to bring that to the board's attention and consideration as split zone property creation is something that the board has to sign off on. Here's an aerial photo. It's a little busy, but you can see with the pink is the boundary of the properties that are involved in the boundary line adjustment. The red would be the proposed parcel lines. There will be one parcel on the north side that will remain undersized for the zoning. It's proposed parcel 1. However, it is ending up larger than the original parcel that they were working with. The balance of the parcels do meet the minimum lot sizes. It would be proposed parcel 1, 2, 3, and then 4 would be across the road, across Leary Road. And that would be the largest parcel at over 300 acres. So as I'd mentioned, we're here because the Williamson Act contracts that cover the property do need to be modified in order to reflect the new boundary lines and ownership that is resulting from this boundary line adjustment. And so here's the procedural part. The entitlement that's requested is that, is a board review to rescind three Williamson Act contracts, amend one Williamson Act contract, and simultaneously re-enter into two new Williamson Act contracts. Right? Easy peasy. And then that will result in all of the contracts being consistent with the lot line adjustment. It will also pull part of the Sanchez property out of another Williamson Act contract that will remain over property owners, properties that are not part of this boundary line adjustment. And then also a request to have the board approve-- And then also a request to have the board approve a lot line adjustment that will result in a split zone property. I think I covered everything. So we did take this to the Agricultural Advisory Committee on June 21st of this year. They did recommend approval to the board, and we did not take this to the Delta CMAC. Boundary line adjustments aren't usually brought to our CPACs. Some project analysis, we do find, staff has found that the request is consistent with the general plan, the zoning code, and the Williamson Act with approval of the split zoning. And then the Williamson Act contracts will be consistent with the proposed lot line adjustment, and the lot line adjustment will allow the parcels to be more conducive to farming. Staff has concluded that the applicable findings for modifying Williamson Act contracts can be made in this case, and approval of the lot line adjustment will concentrate the split zone issue into one resultant parcel. And so this is staff's recommendation. We do recommend approval of the following, and I'll read them briefly. Recognize the exempt status of the request. Approve the rescission agreement for the existing contract and the amendment of one of the contracts. Enter into two new contracts. Adopt the resolution that authorizes the split zone property, and then direct the planning director or designee to process the lot line adjustment that was submitted in 2020. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. No questions? Any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay.
Move approval, Chair.
Okay, first and second, please vote. Okay, and bring us to item 54.
Okay, this is the authority to establish pooled authority in the amount of $1,237,906 to support weather response programs and services to include motel vouchers, cooling and warm centers, and weather respite centers. Enter into an agreement with First Step Housing Doing Business as First Step Communities for staffing and operations of weather respite centers and cooling and warm centers in an amount up to $522,000, effective upon execution through June 30th, 2024, with the option of two one-year renewals through June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you. Emily Halken, Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, here to talk to you about our proposed weather response for this coming winter and then start talking about laying groundwork for subsequent seasons. As you know, over recent years, the county's response to extreme weather and its impacts on homeless populations when we're not under declared emergency has largely been led out of the Department of Human Assistance. And with the increase in extreme weather and volatile weather changes over the years, DHA's response has varied substantially, but generally has included one or more of these following responses. The first is the opening of cooling and warming centers. This is what we would describe as a daytime or overnight-only place for folks to come inside, get some respite, maybe a little snack, not staffed by professional staff, and typically only open during those most impactful hours of the day, not 24/7. The second is use of motel vouchers, which is intended primarily to place highly vulnerable people who can't be safely sheltered in a congregate location in a respite facility. And the third is the opening of what we call weather respite centers, which are differentiated from a cooling and warming center, and that they are intended to be 24/7, staffed with service professionals. This is akin to what we did this past January at Cal Expo at the Howell Community, Howell Recreational Facility, as well as at the Hart Senior Center in partnership with the City of Sacramento. And while data varies widely, as weather events are very, very unpredictable, when we look just at warming and cooling, warming centers, sorry, and the motel vouchers during this past winter season, you can see that, on average, on any given day of activation, we had approximately 330 households and motels, in addition to opening and closing at pretty regular intervals, various DHA lobbies for additional warming opportunities on certain nights. Cooling and warming centers also tend to have very, very high variance in usage. It seems to be dependent on the severity of the weather, whether we're at the front end of a weather event, the back end of a weather event, whether the place we're opening is proximate and accessible to folks on foot, because they have to come and go nightly. But at the height of the winter weather last season, you can see the most popular location that we opened was the 28th Street Bureau that DHA runs, and on average, would have about 40 guests per night. We did definitely see some nights with over 50 guests, and we definitely saw some nights, especially at other locations, where you'd see less than five people at any respite center. I do want to note that we know last year's, well, we don't know that it's anomaly. We may be looking at more seasons like last year and in the coming seasons, but it also included a very significant activation by the Emergency Operations Center, which created some additional respite centers that are not reflected in these data from DHA, because those were collected under the Office of Emergency Services.
Thank you. Emily, Supervisor Kennedy has a question or comment.
Thank you, Chair. Emily, you may not have this off of the top of your head, but do you know what the numbers were for Susie Gaines?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I do know it, because I thought you might ask me that. And it changes daily. So Susie Gaines, sort of, this is the end of January, it looks like maximum, oh, sorry, those are summer, Susie Gaines, 5, 6, 7.
Yeah.
It was very low, low usage.
So 5, 6, 7, and that's still a daily cost of $1,100?
Yes, because you're still staffing it, you're still cleaning it, you're still having security.
Right, yeah, I understand.
All those things.
So you're still looking at 250 bucks a person type of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And Susie Gaines, especially when the City of Sacramento started opening the Pennell Center, I think we saw some even bigger drops, because they're only a mile apart.
Okay, so that's good information to have, because I kind of threw a fit and had Susie Gaines open. I didn't realize the Pennell was open.
And we've since had those conversations with the city in recognition of that, the proximity of those two centers, neither of which gets really heavy traffic. That in future years, if we look to use Susie Gaines or Pennell, that will...
We could join and share costs.
Presumably, yes.
We could even amend our partnership agreement.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So in response to last winter's high demand, and also with the transition of this weather response from DHA to now the new Department of Homeless Services and Housing, staff were asked to engage with the community around how to better address some of these sheltering needs during weather events. So my staff held some very, very extensive listening sessions with a variety of community partners, including folks experiencing homelessness, before developing and releasing a very detailed RFQ, sorry, Request for Qualifications, that aimed to really expand options that we had available to us during weather events. This slide highlights a few of the main findings, but a full assessment of that listening session is included as Attachment 1 to your board letter. So with the input from the listening sessions, staff then issued this Request for Qualifications, allowing for community members to respond in multiple program areas that are all listed here. We also continue to hold the possibility for motel vouchering, although I'll talk a bit more about what that might look like moving forward. The administration and payment of these vouchers would not necessarily be contracted out, because the county holds that actual vouchering system and payment system, but is available to be partnered with other responses as needed. Unfortunately, after a very extensive RFQ process, we only received four responses and only two met thresholds to be considered. As was shared in the listening sessions, there are very significant challenges for our community partners, as there is for the county, to scale up and scale down staffing, to get sites ready on a moment's notice, and to follow a very unpredictable weather patterns, both in planning for budgeting and actually staffing these programs. And additionally, while last year during the EOC activation, we were able to use community facilities that are not owned or controlled by the county, none of the responses that we received contemplated any ongoing use of community facilities, like parks, facilities, or nonprofit-owned buildings. Again, it's likely that those potential partners who may have buildings that are appropriate in the right locations, set up correctly, would face the same challenges that we face now as the county, with wear and tear on buildings, opening and closing, but while also supporting your ongoing business needs. And so we were hoping to get community partners who came to us with facilities as well as staffing. That's just not what we got. So based on the responses that we did get, the recommendations that we're bringing to you today is to stand up one or more weather respite centers in partnership with First Step Communities. And I did note that Steve Waters and Joe Pacheco from First Step are both here today, should you have questions for them, with a preference to use locations that can operate 24/7 during an activation. We are, staff is working right now with the County Department of General Services to identify appropriate or the best county locations that might be available for this winter, with the expectation of having one maximum, maximum two or three sites that could accommodate approximately 50 guests each. First Step Communities would then provide two to four professional shelter staff per site when we're activated, to support client intake, to capture data in our homeless management information system, and provide light case management and referrals to other shelter programs. When weather response is not activated, those same staff would be diverted to our North A Shelter, which First Step also runs, to provide additional enhanced services there. So we'll be paying for them for the whole season and using them to activate as needed. In addition to the staff from First Step Communities, county staff will be working with department heads throughout the county and the County Public Information Officer to hopefully create a pool of county volunteers to be on-site with First Step, to provide some engagement, light services to guests. In years past, you may know that operations was almost entirely done by county volunteers, most of them coming from the Department of Human Assistance, and we'd like to extend and expand this opportunity for other county staff to participate. This is a little hard to read, so I apologize, but under this recommendation, this slide shows then, when would we activate? Again, this is all outside of an activation by the Office of Emergency Services, and compare it to the City of Sacramento. In recent years, we've worked very collaboratively with the city's Department of Community Response to coordinate our response, to coordinate transportation and communication, as weather is very difficult to track and predict and can change with very little warning. And so as you can see in this matrix, our current practice in the winter months especially does align with the city, so we would expect, to Supervisor Kennedy's question, that on those days when we would activate weather respite in the winter, the city would also be doing so as well. You will see, as we move into the summer months, you see more differentiation between us and the city, and so we still have some more work to do with how that might look if they're activating and we're not, or vice versa. Should the board approve staff's recommendation today, this will signify somewhat of a change from past practices. Want to make sure that we're very open about, especially the practices from the last two winters, which were a little bit more extreme, but could be approaching our normal. We do think that by having one or two known locations that are predictable, and hopefully 24/7, that we can activate based on weather conditions, will create a little bit more transparency and predictability for the public at large. That certainly is one of the things that was lifted up very frequently in our listening sessions, is the time that we had to notify people and the changing locations made it very difficult for people who might want to access shelter to do so. And this will also mean, however, that with the budget moving more towards these 24/7 respite centers, less of the budget may be available for motel vouchering to be added on. We will be prioritizing, as we always have, motel vouchering for those most vulnerable with medical fragilities that won't allow them to be sheltered safely in a congregate facility. But we do recognize that over the past few years, motel vouchering, especially last year, became the go-to, and many guests really, really appreciated that option. And so this would be a shift from that. And importantly, today's recommendation is, because of the response we got and some work we still need to do, is really only addressing this upcoming winter season only. It does rely on county facilities, some of which may be available this winter and not in subsequent years. So we will need to continue to work on this for a sustainable and scalable approach, not just for subsequent winters, but also looking into the summer months, which create a whole different host of needs. And so in conclusion, today's action will allow us to implement some new services this winter, which we are excited about. We're happy to have the partnership of First Step Communities, but we still have work to place this work in the overall way that the county is addressing homelessness. As you know, this is an evolving and ever-changing issue, and while we are working really hard towards sustainable sheltering and housing, such that these crisis interventions are not as needed, we do need to have a reliable engine to be able to scale up and scale down in these emergencies. Weather is continually finicky and seems to be becoming more so that way, and so we're anticipating and trying to plan for seasons like last season becoming more of the norm and less of the exception. It's so, therefore, it's likely that the need for respite, shelter, and services such as these to mitigate extreme weather is going to only grow. And this conversation, our options, we're going to have to continue to have this moving into the summer and subsequent winters. So me and my staff are going to continue to work with our community, explore ideas maybe other jurisdictions have implemented, and looking forward to continuing this discussion with the board on how we best protect those living outside during extreme weather. With that, I'm happy to take questions, and I said Steve and Joe are both here, if you'd like to hear from them.
Thank you, Emily. I'll have a couple of questions. First, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you very much, Chair. I don't know, Mr. Waters, this may be a question for you, or Emily, or both, but I'll start with Emily. And how are we doing as far as sustainability of our contractor network? You know, we're pretty heavily taxing now First Step Communities, and there's a big one coming on, as we know. And CityNet is doing a fantastic job as well, but, you know, I'm concerned that we are overtaxing a very small pool of contractors, and we've seen this happen in the past and being a problem.
Yeah, so I definitely share your concerns. I would love for Steve to come, and a few comments from me on that. Is it yes?
And by the way, Mr. Waters, that is not a reflection upon your abilities. It's just, you know, we've been down this road.
Yeah, and I think overall, we're seeing that in social services. I hear from my colleagues at Behavioral Health, the same stretch. It is something that, as we look forward to budget season, we're trying to think about that as well. You know, in particular to weather, in years past, as recently as three or four years, we had one or two other providers, in addition to First Step, who often were available to help us in times of need. They didn't respond, and we did reach out to ask, because they're good, trusted partners. And much of what you said is the reason why, is that their staff are just taxed and drained the so many demands on this sector, so.
Right.
I'm going to see if he wants to add anything, because...
I would just briefly add that, first, thank you for your concern.
I want you to be solvent in two years, okay?
I know. You know, we're heading into our ninth year, and our growth has been pretty steady, but it's been very controlled. We try to be very innovative in our program solutions, but really fiscally conservative, and we're fiscally very strong. We just went through a second audit in less than two years, and we're coming out extremely clean.
Okay.
So we feel very comfortable. I have said no to Emily on a few things in the past, because we try to really keep a focus on our core business.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize, well, first of all, let me back up and say I appreciate all of the work that staff has done to this point and how we've handled things. You know, the extreme weather events are more than just an exercise in humanity. I mean, in some cases, it's a matter of life and death, or preventing serious responses to the cold or the heat. So thank you for everything that we have been doing, but I just want to wrap my head around kind of brass tacks of what we're talking about here today, which is not any increase in funding, it's simply a reallocation, how that funding will be applied, specifically to say that we will handle weather respite in a different way than sort of going to motel vouchers and being the first.
Yes, exactly. So the amount of money considered in this board letter, which is the 1 point, about 1.3 million, just under that, is the amount of money that was budgeted last year. I do think we spent more than was budgeted. What we are asking is to partition off $522,000 specifically for First Step to support it, keep the balance in a pooled authority so that we can activate motel vouchers if needed and/or expand other options as they become available. But yes, this is not a growth, this is the money that was allocated last year, and DHA has now moved over to DHSH.
Okay. And then, somewhat off topic, but, you know, as we start to stand up Safe Stay and other sites that are county-controlled, is there an opportunity to utilize those for respite as well?
No, definitely not off topic. In one of the conversations, we had the first approval of the... In one of the conversations we had, the first approval of the purchase of the WAT, I don't believe you were seated yet, was that building gives us the opportunity, unlike any others, to have some flex space, whether it be for weather events, or whether it be for the need to do some actions related to moving of camps. We are working with DGS and the architect that they've contracted with to factor in those types of flex uses, and when we come back to the board, I think we're planning in early January for that programming discussion, that will be part of that. The others, because they don't have a big congregate facility on site, are a little more difficult, but certainly WAT.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy?
I just wanted to follow up on Supervisor Hume, and one of the things to be very, because I thought the same thing, we've got resources, you know, want to use them as much as we can, but keep in mind, and, you know, Emily, you and your staff know, you know, that we have made a very clear choice in some of our Safe Stays thus far, that these aren't walk-in, walk-out. So it would make it very difficult to operate the way we're operating and use those as respite centers.
It would, and you know, in years past, one of the things, Steve has not said a hard no to, but we're trying to pivot away from, we have used lobbies of our shelters in a very similar way. So the North A Shelter, which is operated by First Step, has a second building, if you've never been out there, which is their administrative offices, and we have used it to flex up, and the issues that you described become challenging. You have guests there who are, you know, guests for months and months, and then somebody coming in for a couple of days. It also disrupts their ability to provide services, so we're trying to be cautious of that.
It disrupts the neighborhood, too.
It does, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good, very good points. So Emily, how does this, you know, change, which is kind of going from a process now that's largely just decentralized, because we're relying so heavily on vouchers, to something that's more centralized, obviously? What do you envision in terms of the implications on transportation? Because that's always a big challenge.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you lifting that, and I had this conversation with our city partners, because in the last year, they were the coordinator of transportation with regional transit, and they have indicated they plan to sustain that as their responsibility, and because our thresholds match up, we should be able to rely on regional transit for individuals transporting themselves. We also, within all our contracts for outreach workers through Sacramento Community Health Works, they also have funding to allow for transportation of guests. Certainly, any location that is not easily accessible by bike or foot creates transportation issues, but we're really hoping that by having a site that is 24/7, and so theoretically, usually when we activate, it's not just one night, it might be two, three, four nights, that people only need to get there once and leave once. But that is certainly key on our mind, and we'll track that.
Yeah, and it's a bigger challenge, obviously, in the unincorporated area, that's more spread out, which is, kind of gets to my other question. One of the reasons we've relied so heavily on vouchers is because of that, because of the nature of, I think, the camps in the unincorporated area, they're so much more spread out, and that has been a better strategy. So, I mean, you mentioned here that we're going to, they'll be more targeted, but they're not going to be taken off the table just if someone...
Right, they won't be. And, you know, vouchers, certainly guests tend to like that a lot, but it also creates a logistical issue.
Right, absolutely.
Where we're not controlling the resource. So for example, this past winter, the Christmas week was activated. Well, getting a hotel at Christmas, the week, you know, the couple of days in advance is really difficult, so we don't even control the capacity that's available at any point in time, and so it can become very, very challenging logistically as well.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment?
We do.
Okay, so I'll bring it back, and thank you, Emily, very, thank you for all your work, and Steve, thank you for being here as well. I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and I'll take us to our nominations.
Okay. That would be item 55. You are continuing to November 7th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Community Review Commission, First Five Commission, and the North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to December 5th, the Civil Service Commission, Disability Advisory Commission, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to December 12th is Building Board of Appeals, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, and the Veterans Advisory Commission. Today, we have Children's Coalition.
Chief's recommending nominating Madison Sheffield, and continuing the remainder to December 12th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, I'd like to nominate, I'm going to say Ms. Nurru Bates, because I'm not about to butcher her first name.
Okay, I got you. And then Supervisor Hume?
Continue to November 7th.
Thank you. Okay, Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Chair Desmond, or I'm sorry, Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to December 12th.
Thank you. Sylvan Cemetery District.
Please continue to December 12th.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay, our county exec.
No comments, thank you.
My colleagues, I don't see anybody queued up.
I do have something, if I, I'm sorry, I know, I disappoint every time. This is simply a procedural question. I have a situation where there is an affordable housing project, actually, I believe it's in Mr. Kennedy's district, but it's a partner with an agency on whose board I sit, and it's a situation where, because of the increase in interest rates, it's potentially derailing the opportunity to bring this forward, which would be at a significant discount per door than what we saw in our presentation earlier. Long story short, they need help with a bridge loan. I have explored this with our Department of Finance, and we do not have a mechanism, apparently, to invest county money. This would be a loan that would receive payments, it would be a secured 50% loan to value on the property, roughly, three- to five-year-ish payback time. So I'm just testing, is this something that we would put on an agenda? Is this something that the board would like to discuss? What can I do so that I don't accept no as the answer I've been given?
Or create a yes.
Or create a yes.
Yeah, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, but the rules of procedure allow for a board member to put something on the agenda, so you would simply request that.
Yeah, good, we can have the agenda, but it'd be a mid-year budget action if the board were to take some action like this, correct?
Well, you'd have to develop a policy to allow it first.
Okay. I think I heard my path forward.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned at 4:05.